I call to order the regular session of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpin Springs on Tuesday, July 26, 2022 at 6:30 PM. Role call, please.
Mayor Vaticodas?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lott?
Here.
Commissioner Carr?
Here.
Commissioner Eisner?
Here.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Here.
This evening, our invocation will be given by Reverend Anson Bob Chaplin for Advent Health Hospitals. Reverend Bob, if you could come forward and after the invocation, we'll stand, actually stand for the invocation, but we'll turn and pledge allegiance to the flag led by your city attorney, Tom Trask.
A pleasant good evening to all. I'm extremely delighted, but also humbled to share this invocation at your Board of Commissions meeting. Being a resident for Tarpin Spring for over 15 years, after migrating from the island of Trinidad and Tobago and the Cayman Islands, I'm truly honored this evening. Four things on earth are small and yet extremely wise: the ants, the badgers or mountain rabbits, the spider and the locusts. Can we focus on one of them briefly for our lesson this evening? As we consider the power and the effects of unity, the locusts, these creatures has no king, that is, no designated leader, yet they advance in bands and achieve great works, destructive as it is. But nevertheless, the power and effect of unity is realized. How about the redwood trees of California? They grow upward 300 feet and are sustained by roots that goes a mere eight feet in the ground. But keep in mind that nature has arranged that these roots, they have arranged a network, a sort of grid arrangement to support 300 feet member. I hope that the exhortation is being made clear somehow. As we choose to engage and adopt the attitude and practice of unity in our personal and professional lives, we would experience phenomenal growth and success in all our endeavors. Can we pray together, please? Dear God, we thank you for that word which you gave us. That two is better than one because they have good reward for their labor. And a cord of three strands is not easily broken. Lord, we thank you for these men and women who serve your people in the city of Tarpin Springs. Please help them firstly to be submitted to you. Then may you endow them with grace to be sustained and submitted to each other in the spirit of unity. This we ask in Christ's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got a brief announcement before we get started on public comments. Our remote access for public comments is down, Zoom. We had some, for the sake of a better word, lightning interaction with City Hall yesterday that we're still trying to recover from, both wireless internet and also some of our connections with the outside world. So we'll have that remedied, I'm pretty sure, by our next meeting, actually hopefully by our, actually next public meeting where public comments are allowed. Also, we have no emails this evening as far as public comments and on any of the consent or agenda items for this evening. So let's go to public comments for anybody that's here this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Anita Prost, 901 Bates Shore Drive. This is the third time I've been up here to ask about this issue. Monday, school starts. I went to a gathering Sunday and even some of Mr. Lunt's neighbors on his street were there. And they're all saying, what's happening with the bridge? What's happening with the school buses going over that bridge? I've asked that you would have the county come up and give the citizens who watch our meetings will know about the construction of the new bridge. When is it going to start? How long is it going to take? Because it'll be over a year that we'll be going around the other side of the bayou. And we know there's flooding at the other bridge in the intersection at Martin Luther King. And I referred them all to Chesapeake to call their commissioner who lives there, and I hope they call him. But this is important to our community, and you are the leaders of this community. We need to let the citizens know what's happening. You see the stakes all over, close to the fence at the Mobile Home Park, close to the homes of the people when you go over the bridge and at the intersection of the street. We want to know what they're going to do with the bridge and on both sides of the bridge, how much property it's going to take, what's going to happen. We need to have a report, and we're not getting it. So call Mr. Eggers, our commissioner, who represents us from this area, or bring someone from the county to let us know something, or see if we can have an open meeting on a Saturday morning so people can come and look. I know a lot of people have contacted some of the commissioners and the mayor, but they're not getting answers. We live in this community, and we need to know. And we're concerned about the school buses going over that bridge with our children on it. And if you can't take care of it, maybe our police chief can. Thank you.
For the residents' benefit, nothing has changed as of about a month and a half ago. Construction won't begin until sometime in 2023. And for the record, I've not received any inquiries from anyone concerning missing information. And if any resident wants to know information, we certainly have an excellent project administrator that can provide anything they want and also put them in contact with a specific person at Pinellas County that can provide them that information. That's the information that we have right now on the replacement of the Beckett Bridge over there by the Yacht Club. Public comments. Next person, please.
Christopher Boski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpin Springs, 34689. So I'm here to give you another update on Mr. Clay Colson's lawsuits. Because I'm concerned that you're getting misinformation or being misled about it. You know, the case is not over. The city just filed something on Friday, and Mr. Colson filed something yesterday. That's just in the regular court. The DCA is all over the matter. He's got 30 days to file something there. I do believe, however, that the city has passed the deadline for settlement with Mr. Colson per his letter. But if you contact the man, I'm pretty sure he would work it out, give you extra time if you need to. This is still something that can be done. Or you can contact, you know, and if you want to say that that letter is not a legitimate settlement, then have the city attorneys draft something that is legitimate. You can take this from either side. There's no reason to keep prolonging this pain. There's a whole lot of mischaracterization. And I mean, if it makes you feel any better, the city attorney, you know, mischaracterized the law to the court itself. But that shouldn't make you feel good. So they're not only just telling you that the case is over and that it means X when really it means Y. Because that will be proven. I mean, it's in the transcript, if you've read that, the transcript from the hearing with Mr. Colson and the city. The judge never said 30 days from today, he has to reply. However, the city, you guys are asserting that that's what was done. That's just not true. Read the transcript. Judge never said that. So trying to fudge the truth there a little bit shouldn't go well in court. Read the transcripts. It's right there on the docket in one of the documents that Clay submitted. Now, he submitted an amended document today. I don't know when, or no, it was Monday. I don't know when that'll be posted. But the truth is right there in black and white, and yet the city is saying something else. And the whole DCA thing was something that the city attorneys dragged us all into. Didn't have to be done. They could have just said no objection to Mr. Colson recording. Wouldn't hurt any citizen in this city, wouldn't hurt the law firm. But there's a little thing known as Star Chamber Justice that we were supposed to have done away with. That's why courtrooms are big, lots of seats for people, so they're not done in secret and private. But those that don't allow recording, that's what they want, Star Chamber Justice. It's illegal. It's improper. It's immoral. So for anyone to assert that we don't have First Amendment rights in court is doing a misservice to those they represent. And they didn't even have to do it. It was either to get more money or to try to hide something. I don't know why they did it, but it's wrong. It's absolutely wrong. And you should ask them, why? Why'd you do it? And don't buy this BS about, well, there's this rule and they're supposed to, no. It's not what the Supreme Court says, and that's not even what the Florida Supreme Court says. And this case is headed there. So depending on what the second DCA decides, this thing's going straight to the Florida Supreme Court. Make no mistake about it. That means the city will be in the Florida Supreme Court. You want that? Oh, Andy Smarcus was going to give me two minutes. Is that okay?
We don't do the extra two minutes for public comments on nothing on the agenda. We allow it on the agenda items themselves.
I understand.
You take a couple of seconds and wrap it up.
No, no, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Public comments, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Brian Scott. I live at 4509 Harbor Hills Drive in Largo. And I just wanted to take a couple of minutes tonight to introduce myself and my campaign. I'm a candidate for County Commission District Two, which is at large. It encompasses the whole county, but District Two does include Tarpin Springs as well. And I am a business owner. I'm a first-time candidate, and I'm a 40-year Pinellas County resident. And I am running to bring common sense business decision-making back to the Pinellas County Commission, which is something that I feel has been very much lacking for a number of years now. So my history is, my family moved, relocated from upstate New York in the early 80s, and we landed in Pinellas County. And then in 1983, we started a family business called Escot Bus Lines, which at that time consisted of two mini-buses operating daily shuttle service to the dog track and the horse track. My dad was the driver. My mom took reservations, and my sister and I were the bus washers. And we washed buses before school. We washed buses after school. We probably washed buses during school. On the weekends and the holidays and our birthdays, you kind of get the idea. We got our hands dirty. But the hard work paid off, and through the years, the business grew. And in 2008, my sister and I purchased the business from our mom and dad, and we own it and operate it today. And from those two bus beginnings, we now operate 70 vehicles. We have 140 employees, and we have offices in Largo, Orlando, and Miami. And our annual operating budget is pretty close to that of the city of Seminole. And throughout my entire career, I've felt a very strong desire to give back. And I did that early on by volunteering for pretty much any industry leadership position there was to have. I led virtually every industry association from the Florida Motor Coach Association, the International Motor Coach Group, and a few others, testifying before Congress on two occasions about transportation issues. And most recently, I just completed a four-year term as president of Tracks Insurance Limited, which is an offshore captive insurance company that we insure, how we insure our motor coach fleet. And in that role, managed upwards of $50 million in assets and premium. And after I checked off all of those industry leadership boxes, I turned my attention to my local community. And since 2010, I have been volunteering my time on four different boards: the local coordinating board for the transportation disadvantaged, the Citizens Advisory Committee for Forward Pinellas, the Parks and Advisory Conservation Board. And most notably, I was appointed by the Board of County Commissioners to the Pinellas Suncoast Transit Authority Board from 2012 to 2018. And that's one of the reasons why I decided to run for this position is because I saw the waste and abuse that had happened at PSCA and realized that there's only so much that you can do as a volunteer. And if you want to make real change, you can only do that as an elected official. And the things I will be focused on is, number one, lowering taxes so we can keep Pinellas affordable for everybody, enacting term limits for county commissioners. I feel very strongly that we need term limits on the county. Improving transportation in Pinellas County, including re-envisioning the delivery of transit services in this county. Operating buses is something I know a little bit about. I support 140 families doing that and make a living by doing that. And I can tell you that PSCA is a massive money pit and is completely, is completely employed the wrong way. And we need to completely turn that situation upside down and just re-envision how we're delivering transit services in this county. In addition to improving water quality, making sure we fully fund law enforcement and supervisor of elections. So in a nutshell, that's who I am. That is why I'm running. And I would love to take the opportunity to sit down with you individually and discuss any of those further. And please visit my website, votebryanscott.com. And I would also love to hear more about the issues and opportunities that you're having here in Tarpin Springs. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Are there any other public comments?
Here to Wax 514 Ashland Avenue. Before I get into my reading, I would like to first thank former Mayor, Mrs. Protas about bringing up about the bridge and what's going on. I remember it must have been, what, five years ago, they had a nice meeting at the Yacht Club. County people were there. Our people were there. People were able to go. So it really wouldn't hurt to find some way, when it gets a little closer, to have something out there. Today's reading will be from Psalm 112. And I bring this in a measure of gratitude and thanks, that we all should be grateful and thankful for what the Lord has provided to us all, this wonderful community that you are now in charge of. Praise the Lord. Blessed is the man who fears the Lord, who finds great delight in his commands. His children will be mighty in the land. Each generation of the upright will be blessed. Wealth and riches are in his house, and his righteousness endures forever. Even in darkness, light dawns for the upright, for the gracious and compassionate and righteous man. Good will come to him who is generous and lends freely, who conducts his affairs with justice. Surely he will never be shaken. A righteous man will be remembered forever. He will have no fear of bad news. His heart is steadfast, trusting in the Lord. His heart is secure. He will have no fear. And in the end, he will look in triumph on his foes. He has scattered abroad his gifts to the poor. His righteousness endures forever. His horn will be lifted high in honor. The wicked man will see, and he will be vexed. He will gnash his teeth and waste away. The longings of the wicked will come to nothing. Thank you for allowing me to share that. And lastly, with regards to a couple of local issues, we are still in the midst of trying to decide what to do with the Hoffman property. So in the meantime, I would suggest, how about putting a few benches out there for people to come and sit under the trees? Temporary solution, once you decide what you want to do, it's not hard to remove them as you've removed benches all over the city. So that would be a suggestion as to how to help people enjoy that area of our city. And I would lastly like to say at this point, I know you mentioned about the Zoom being out, but I have to again thank all of y'all for allowing remote access. As you've seen, since this has been allowed to be done, it has not delayed your meetings or interrupted your meetings or really affected the timeframe of your meetings any more than any of the discussions that go before the board. So I want to applaud you for allowing the citizens access to reach you, either through Zoom itself, or watching and calling in, or their emails. Because this is what the citizens asked of you during your campaign, and this is one of the promises that I'm glad to see you have fulfilled. Thank you for your time. God bless you all.
Thank you.
Well, Ms. Dabs, coming up, we are having problems with YouTube and Facebook Live also we're working on. So I want to announce that to those. We're working on that problem. We don't know if we're going to be able to get that up or not, but we're live recording. That's working. But the other, we're having issues with.
I'm Annie Dabs. I reside at 803 South Distance Avenue in the city. Before I begin, I'd like to share this with you from Isaiah 40th chapter. It says as follows. Have you not known? Have you not heard? Has it not been told you from the beginning? Have you not understood from the foundation of the earth? It is he who sits among the circle of the earth, and its inhabitants are like grasshoppers who stretch out the heavens like a curtain and spread them like a tent to live in, who bring princes to note and make the ruler of the earth as nothing. Secretly are they planted, sacredly sown. Has their stem taken root in the earth when he blows upon them? And they wither, and the tempests carry them off like stubs. To whom then will you compare me, or who is my equal, says the Holy One? Lift up your eyes on high and see who created these. He who brings out their host and numbers them, calling them all by name, because he is great in strength and mighty in power. Not one is missing. Why do you say, O Jacob, and speak, O Israel? My way is hidden from the Lord, and my My way is hidden from the Lord, and my right is disregarded by God. Have you not known? Have you not heard? The Lord is the everlasting God, the creator of the earth. He does not faint, nor grow weary. His understanding is unsearchable. He gives power to the faint and strength to the powerless. Even the youth will faint and be weary, and the young will fall exhausted. But those who wait for the Lord shall renew their strength. They should mount up with wings like eagles, not be weary. They should walk and not faint. On to historic preservation. What is historic preservation? Historic preservation is a conversation with our past about our future. It provides us with opportunities to ask, what is important in our history? And what part of our past can we preserve for the future? Through historic preservation, we look at history in different ways, ask different questions of the past, and learn new things about our history and ourselves. Historic preservation is an important way for us to transmit our understanding of the past to future generations. Within the National Park Service, many people work in historic preservation. Archaeologists, architects, curators, historians, landscape architects, and other culture resources professionals. The National Park Service carry out these historic preservation, both within and outside the park. And as I close, I will say, this year in 2022 brought the fifty-seventh anniversary of what was much more than a law passed by Congress. Rather, it was a nationwide realization of a truth expressed by President John F. Kennedy. A nation can be a victim of amnesia if it loses the memory of what it was, and therefore lose the sense of what it is or wants to be. History is past. We may not like, some of us may not like what has happened, but it's history. It's done, and we can preserve what we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dabs.
And she's referring to the Civil Rights Act of 1965 and then the Civil Rights Voting Act of 67.
Thanks. Is there anyone else, public comments? I want to pick up, since Mr. Delakis brought the Anclot River Bridge, actually known as the Beckett Bridge, I just took a quick look at the county's website. And for everybody's, I know we're having a hard time viewing this evening, but basically, the plan will not be, the design will not be complete until late 2022, the winter of 2022. And construction is not planned to commence until the late 2023. And also, the county is planning on a meeting sometimes between the winter of 2022, when the details of the final design are available, and prior to construction. And I'm sure we'll probably have that meeting sometimes in the spring, I would suspect with the city's participation in that. So, I just wanted to provide that additional information, that when information is available that's different than what's available right now, we'll certainly provide that to you. Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. We've got item one, satisfaction and release of liens. Item two, attorney's fees, Trask, Dagenal, LLP, invoice July 1st. B, Johnson and Jackson, PLLC, invoice 9664. Item three, award file number 220128-CJL, cargo trailers utilizing the Sheriff's Association contract. Item four, award file number 220157-C-AS, flooring materials, and this is related to carpet replacement here in the city hall. Item five, authorized execution of CAD, RMS, crime scene, and fingerprint equipment, and approve additional expenses through the sheriff's office. And item six, authorized city manager to sign forms, DR-420-TIF and DR-420-MMP, those are related to the mileage rate for this year. Is there any commission that would like to pull any of the agenda items off the consent agenda?
Number six? Number six?
And I have two, three, and four. Two, three, and four.
Two, three, four, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there anything else? All right. We've got, the best I can tell is two items left on the consent item. So, may I, we have a motion to approve a consent agenda item number one and number five?
Motion.
To approve?
Yes.
Okay. Second? Anybody second?
A second.
Okay. I'm going to ask if there's any public comments concerning that. I would assume there are none. I'm sure there aren't any commission comments. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Koolas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticus?
Yes. Okay, let's go to in order, as they appear on the consent item. And technically, they've been pulled from the consent item and put on the regular agenda. So, item number two, attorney's fees, A, Trask, Dagenal, and B, Johnson, Jackson. Commissioner Eisner.
Thank you, Mayor. This is fairly new to me, so I did have some questions regarding this. And I wanted the city attorney, if he would, you know, to let us know why on invoice 812, on page three of six, are we being charged travel time to go and come?
The question is concerning travel time?
Yes.
And should that be part of the normal charges?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And is that for just the one?
No, there's more. I mean, do you want me to go through them all? But I mean, there's, there's...
Why don't we go through them all and let, Mr. Trask, you're here this evening, so I assume you're going to address these one at a time or all together?
Whatever's a pleasure of the commission.
Whatever you would like to do, Commissioner Eisner.
Well, we have a heritage board that was a meeting of an hour and eighteen minutes, and we were billed three hours. The fee is one hundred and eighty-five an hour. We were billed five hundred and fifty-five dollars. There was another, this meeting, that was, again, I don't even know how much this one was, because it just says, "Preparation for Travel to and Attendance At." And it has three hundred and seventy dollars. But there are these throughout, and there's no breakdown of how much travel time there was versus how much prep time there was. And I don't even know why there's travel time in there, is my question.
But, is that it then?
Yes.
Okay. I'm assuming this applies to Mr. Trask and his firm?
Yes.
Okay. And may I ask, is there anything on Johnson, Jackson that?
There is not.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Trask, would you like to answer those questions?
Yeah, there is travel time on me leaving the firm, coming to the city for the purposes of handling the code enforcement board, which is once a month. That's about a thirty-minute travel time coming to the city. And there is travel time for me coming to the commission meetings, or me coming here to city hall for office hours. They total about an hour to two hours a month of travel time that is coming to the city to do the city's work. So, I don't know if you want any more information than that, but it's usually about thirty-minute travel time. As for preparation, it all depends on the actual agenda and the agenda item and the backup that is there. Sometimes there's a requirement to not only read the packet, also to read the code, maybe some of the state statutes, and do any legal research. And then sometimes it is actually looking at, you know, a further backup that I may have in the file, for example. As for the heritage preservation board, I don't handle that. One of the other attorneys handles that. So, I don't really have any specifics. That is a fact-intensive review of each one of those applications. The applications are complex sometimes. And so, I would assume that the lawyer that was handling that, that particular item, you know, spent some time preparing for that meeting? And I don't know the specifics of the one that you're talking about, but that's generally what we do. I think that we're very, very conservative. We've been charging the city in this way, I believe, since 1996. Nothing has changed. But I'd also kind of remind the commission that this isn't just, you know, I'm not just the city attorney while I'm here. I'm the city attorney twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, every day of the year. And being the city attorney, that often requires me to be available after hours, taking calls from each one of you commissioners, the city manager, and others in the city during the weekend. And you will note that if you look at the time slips, I hardly ever charge for those. I'm doing that on my own time, and I think that I'm doing that as a service to the city, and I'm very, very conservative on my billing. If you have any other specific questions, either before or after the meeting, I'd be happy to answer them or find the lawyer that is actually handling the matter. Because you remember, there are eight lawyers that we have at the law firm that work for the city on different matters. So, I hope I answered your questions, Commissioner.
Yes, you've answered that question, but I was just curious, who approved that in the first place, was my question. Because as I look in your contract, I don't really see any place that it calls for an agreement to bill for travel time. That was why I asked that question.
Yeah, I'm not really sure how, when it was first originally approved back in the nineties, but, you know, that is the process that we've used ever since. So, I don't know the answer to your question.
Well, can I read, your contract states that the city shall pay all costs incurred or advanced by firm representing the city pursuant to this agreement. Such costs include, but not limited to, court filing fees, deposition charges, photocopying charges, long-distance telephone calls, federal express charges, and only out-of-county travel charges. It has nothing about traveling to and from our meetings. So, my question is still, even back in ninety-nine, I wasn't here, so I can only ask about what I'm looking at now.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if I can answer your question, but as for costs, those are different than the fees themselves. Costs are things that are directly out of pocket that we charge. So, for example, if we were to travel out of county and we had to pay a toll fee, for example, or a parking fee at a courthouse, for example, those would be the costs that would fall under that portion of the agreement with the city. As for the travel time, you know, it is an hour or two a month, based upon, you know, the history of doing it for the city of Tarpon Springs.
So, since I'm not an attorney, what I did is I did a little research, and I typed in, should a city attorney bill for travel time? And it says here, if you decide to bill for travel time, you must assign a billing rate to travel time. If employees record travel time outside normal business hours, you might choose to bill at the certain billing rate during normal business hours, since an employee can't work on a service call for another customer while traveling. Another one said, for the most part, attorneys won't bill you at the hourly rate while they're traveling, but that doesn't mean you won't end up paying for that time in another way. Lawyers on an hourly fee arrangements may be asked to be reimbursed for travel costs, such as they would for other legal costs like filing fees and court costs. And I don't mind finishing with a third one. It says, "The mileage-based rate can be useful way to charge clients. This can be sufficient to recover the costs of fuel along with the cost of time spent while traveling," you know, "and the onsite visit. One can create a suitable mile-based fee, so one can recover both the costs." The other question that I would also like to answer is, I did call other attorneys, because I like doing my research before I speak, and I did get feedback from other attorneys that usually travel time is not charged. So, that's why I'm asking this question of why we're being charged for travel time.
I think I've answered the question. I don't know what you're reading from, but I'm not a city employee. I'm not subject to city employee mileage.
I didn't say city, it says city attorney.
No, you had said employee. You had read employee during your statement, so I'm not a city employee. So, if that's the position of the city commission, that you don't want me to charge for the half-hour travel time, you know, that's fine, I'll stop charging the half-hour travel time. But I'm going to have to be a little bit more particular then on the evening hours and the weekend hours, I'm going to have to pick that up. So, I won't be able to continue to write off, you know, all that additional time. But again, I think I'm being fairly conservative on what I'm billing. And as for other attorneys giving their comments, each client is different, they're treated differently. Local governments are treated differently than private clients, as you know. In your construction business up north, you've probably dealt with attorneys up there, it's a little bit different than here. They may charge five hundred dollars an hour, we charge one hundred and eighty-five dollars an hour. So, it's a lower hourly rate with the understanding that, you know, there is going to be a significant amount of time involved in representing the city. So, I think I do a good job, and I do it at a fair rate, and I'm conservative.
I was not questioning with that, I was questioning more so that none of this is in the contract, and I just didn't understand why it's not in the contract, because then there would be no question. But...
Okay.
Would it help to amend the contract to clarify it? I mean, I'm not sure, is that, I'm not sure. I know you're pointing out that it's not in the contract. There are customary charges that professionals provide, but I'm just trying to understand and perhaps help in this discussion so that we can kind of come to a resolution on it. Is that what you're, would that be satisfactory, an amendment to the contract?
Well, I'm only one-fifth of the vote, so I mean...
No, I understand that, but I mean, you're asking, you're the only one asking the questions right now, and somebody's going to have to take a lead from somebody, and you're the only one asking the questions. After you're done, I'll ask the rest of the commission of what they would like to do, but I'm just trying to find out from your perspective, what, where do we end this, I guess is what I'm getting at.
I just don't, I've not seen any, in all my research, I've not seen any place where it says, "A city attorney charges for travel time."
Okay, so perhaps a contract amendment to that effect, if that's what the commission wishes to do?
I'm open to whatever the commission wants to do.
Okay. Well, let me hear from Commissioner Eisner, Vice Mayor Lunt, as far as seniority goes. Do you have any comments concerning this matter?
I have no comments.
Okay. Commissioner Carr? Commissioner Koolas?
I would just make a recommendation to amend the contract if needed with at least a minimum bill rate of a hundred dollars an hour. I mean, I'm okay with the one eighty-five, but if someone else wants to think it's lower, it's fine, but, I mean, I've seen, I think we get some good value out of it too. And I remember talking to Mr. Daniel for about forty-five minutes, and we only billed about a third of an hour. So, there are times it does balance out.
We're not getting a clear consensus of what to do at this particular point. Perhaps if the city attorney can provide a memorandum clarifying everything, maybe in a little more detail concerning the historic preservation board, and then, maybe Commissioner Eisner can get with you on that. I'm not sure if you see any other resolution of this, other than what I'm suggesting to satisfy... satisfy the immediate questions, anyway.
No, I think that the appropriate thing to do would be to amend the contract, to just make that absolutely clear, if it's not clear already.
Okay. So what we're going to do is the city attorney's going to proceed in that regard, and then he'll bring it back before us at some point in time. City manager, is that clear as far as the future agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Item three, Commissioner Eisner, that's yours as well.
Is there public comment or...
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Yes, Commissioner Delakas, come forward.
Peter Delax, 514 Ashland Avenue. Commissioner Eisner, very good observation. The easiest way to solve it, when the next contract comes up, say specifically list travel time and a certain rate. If it's a hundred, hundred and a quarter, that way you define it. But I do have to comment a little bit about billing. That was what I was going to call, come up here about before. Just to point out, on invoice nine hundred, that was versus Concerned Citizens of Tarpon Springs, forty-three-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars. Another invoice, nine oh-two, Concerned Citizens Tarpon Springs, RIT, five-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars, almost five grand there. Invoice nine oh-one, Colson, thirty-one-hundred-and-eight dollars. So right there, you've spent over seventy-five-eight thousand dollars in trying to defend something that's indefensible. But let's go a little bit further, deeper into the billing. So if you got a chance, first off, I was kind of curious about invoice eight ninety-nine. Anybody do any research on this one? Tarpon Springs, Rebecca Vares Ebert. There's a lot of briefs and amendments going down. Five-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-six dollars and fifty cents. What's that about? Then let's get to Concerned Citizens of Tarpon Springs. Now, on page two of that, at six twenty, on six twenty-three, phone call with Jay, motion to recuse, point three. And then a little further down, six twenty-three, DeNo, call with TJT to discuss handling a motion. Are they charging you both for the same phone call?
Yes.
And call with mayor. There's one here, call with Commissioner Kuyas, six twenty-eight, point four. So you are getting billed for your phone calls. It's not like you're not getting billed. I mean, I only looked at this curiosity just to see that. So you go, oh, 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 I forgot this one. Look at this one, page two, bottom of invoice nine hundred. This is the Concerned Citizen Tarpon Springs. Service, six twenty-eight, J.D., that's Jay DeNo. Preparation for, travel to, and attend B.O.C. Six-point-nine hours, twelve-hundred-seventy-six dollars and fifty cents. That was the evening Jay sat here most of the time unless he was discussing issues with Commissioner Carr and answering a few other questions. So y'all paid twelve-hundred-seventy-six-fifty for Jay to sit here most of the evening. So instead of maybe looking at just one issue of the contract?
Maybe it's time to put an RFP out, sign...
If it's time to review our attorney services in general. Not saying that Mr. Trask and Mr. DeNo haven't done a good job in most of the cases they've represented you, but it appears that some of the citizens are losing faith in the legal recommendations and billings that the city is receiving. I can't say, I'm not saying it's illegal. I'm not saying it's wrong. Possibly the way those attorney firms bill. And yes, Mr. Trask is right. He does give you a good deal, a hundred and eighty-five, because I know what it costs to pay for attorneys, and I know what other cities charge for their attorneys. So overall, he is right. He's giving you a good deal. So you have to put that in balance. But I think the overall aspect is, maybe you need to look at the way your whole attorney billing handling structure is. They charge you for each individual board, you know, travel, phone calls. Y'all can all decide that on a contract and work equitably and reasonably with Mr. Trask and determine if you can reach a common ground. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delakas.
Anita Protus, nine oh-one Bayshore Drive. And I know I'm not anyone's popular ex-mayor here, but I think Mr. Eisner, sometimes on the questions he asks, can go to the city manager, can sit down with the city attorney and get explanations and try, and trying to make points here at the city commission meeting. And a lot of people feel that way. And what I want to say about Mr. Trask, he's one of the most respected attorneys in Pine Alice County. His firm is highly respected. He would not overcharge us. He would not try to take advantage of the city. In fact, I can remember when he's given more than what, where he should have charged. This isn't nice tonight. And mayor, you should ask that he talk to the city manager, get with Mr. Trask, Trask and go through this. We don't condemn our people here in the city. We're not supposed to. But Mr. Trask, thank you for everything you've given Tarpon. The biggest bills this city has ever had is when we had the grand jury investigation here when Tom Colianis was mayor. Look them up, see what happened, and then go from there before you start questioning and making someone look bad or accusing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Annie Samarcos is donating two minutes of time. Chris Robowski, one-six-zero-two Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, three-four-six-eight-nine. So call up Commissioner Jeff Larson. Ask him how many times he caught their hand in the cookie jar. Go knock on his door. He doesn't live that far from here. Call up Mayor Bojalski of Dunedin. Ask her why they had to get rid of them and their firm. Call up Attorney Ralph Brooks from Madeira Beach. Ask them, these people are not superstars somewhere you can't get a hold of them. You can drive right down to Dunedin to talk to the mayor. Find out why they had to get rid of these folks. And it puzzles me to this minute that we still have them. So yeah, put out an RFP. It's not going to harm them. Hell, you can stick with them if you like. But what did he do when he, you said you were going to maybe start charging them to drive? He threatened you. Said, I'm going to start charging you for weekends then. Really? Well, that doesn't sound like a good situation there, does it? So you might get your drive time paid back, but he's going to make it up in other ways. He just busted himself by telling you he's going to steal from you a different way. He's an attorney. It should have been in the contract. We went through this one another contract where there was a mess. You held their feet to the fire, right? She's not going to hold an attorney? I mean, I could see where somebody else might make a mistake, but attorneys don't get to make those kind of mistakes. Oh, nobody. You will be held to account. So do the right thing, put out an RFP. That doesn't mean you have to go with somebody new. It just means you're going to look into it and ask them, hey, guys, you know, what do you think about this previous attorney, how he handled things here? Ask them about that DCA question. Was that just to charge money? Ask them about those multiple binders of papers that were sent out. You know, they stopped doing that after we called attention to the fact that they were mailing Mr. Clay Colson multiple packets of items. And now, it may be true that some of those came from Morgan Group, but the funny thing is, the Morgan Group's not even in the lawsuit with Mr. Colson yet. They tried, they're not in. And on that fateful day when they had the hearing, the city showed up with a court reporter, and so did the Morgan Group. Somebody got stuck with that bill. Was it the city? Did the city have to pay? I bet they had to pay anyway. All they had to do was coordinate and say, which, who's going to do this? One phone call would have saved at least a hundred bucks, or whatever, you know, those things add up. So how many times has this happened? Well, they could have saved money, and they didn't. Maybe they're helping their other attorney buddies out. Now, well, I'll make a buck off of this. I don't know. I don't know what's going on. I just know something's going on. And there's somebody that figured it out in Dunedin, somebody who figured it out in Madeira Beach, and Jeff Larson figured it out here, when he was commissioner. And he even asked, isn't there a process for looking into this? This double-dipping? And the city manager said, yes, there is. But then why didn't they catch it with that system? Culture. There has been a culture of, oh, well, let's turn a blind eye to that gas money on the tab. So I've been asking you for months and years, to put somebody on it. Somebody needs to be looking into this. This is the kind of stuff you do a real investigation into. And this man and his firm might get ethics complaints and bar complaints just on Mr. Colson's case alone because of how they misrepresented the truth. Now, it just blows my mind. Have you guys read the transcript? You saw the judge didn't say what they said the judge said. So it's in black and white. And it keeps adding up, cost-wise, to the taxpayers. We don't need that. And as a security measure, you get an RFP, you find another firm, somebody else can come in here and do the job right. Doesn't hurt anybody. You going to worry about his feelings? Really? You got all these taxpayers out here concerned? It's not easy standing up to somebody like that, is it? Especially when they purport to come from a position of knowing and power. But that's your job, stand up to them. And thank you for doing some research. It's about time somebody did. All you got to do is the right thing. Call those people I mentioned, put out an RFP, compare apples to apples, find out what you got and what you can get. Doesn't hurt anybody, just helps move this process along. But the fact this thing might be going to the Florida Supreme Court, and the city has taken a position against the little people having the right to the First Amendment, and that's going to cost big. It ain't going to cost Clay nothing, but his time and efforts. But the city taxpayer will be on the hook. That's why I said, reach out to Mr. Colson, settle the case. Put this thing to rest. You won't have to hear from me.
Thank you, Mr. Robowski. Is there anyone else? Okay. Commissioner Eisner, if I may ask...
I still have more. I wanted to say if I could...
You have more comments?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Well, there was a couple of comments made to Mr. Eisner. I'm still Commissioner Eisner. I would like the city manager...
Did I call you Commissioner Eisner?
No, not her.
Oh, sorry.
Anita did. Did I contact you regarding this discussion about the city attorney? Did I ask you about that?
Yes, and I sent you the contract, yes.
Yes, you sent me the contract. When I asked you all these questions, did you answer me with you didn't know the answer to these questions and that I would have to bring it up here?
Yes.
Okay. So the accusation that I just made this up or we're trying to do things was ridiculous. If you don't mind, Billy, would you be able to come up here for a minute? Thank you. Did I call you and ask you about this contract?
You did.
Did you tell me that you did not have an answer for me as well?
God, yes, I did.
And you also spoke to me about the fact that, that it should have been in a contract, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so with all this, I have to take care of the pocketbook of Tarpon Springs. And I know this is not an easy topic, and I have to bring it up because I contacted you, I contacted the city manager, I contacted another attorney, and I'm out of contacts except to contact our city attorney. So I thank you for what you just said. I thank you for what you just said. I did my job, and if somebody wants to attack me for doing my job, have at it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other commission comments?
I have one more thing, if you don't mind me just quickly reading...
On the same item?
Same item.
Okay, go ahead.
In its model litigation guidelines, the Claims and Litigation Management Alliance recommends paying attorneys at only half of their hourly rate for travel time. Many companies have either adopted this specific recommendation or pay attorneys for travel time at a reduced rate. It's not unpredictably, many attorneys have complained about this reduced compensation for travel time. Their argument goes that if they do not, if they were not traveling for the client at a reduced hourly rate, they would be in their office billing other clients at their full hourly rate. There's a whole three pages on this. All I'm saying is, it's not in the contract. It shouldn't be billed. It should have never been billed without it being in the contract at whether we're paying mileage, whether we're paying half rate, whether we're paying full rate. I was not contesting whether he does a good job, the city attorney, or not. None of those things are what I brought up. I just brought up something's missing, and we're being billed for stuff that is, is not in the contract. If it's not in the contract, it's not to be paid, period.
Okay. What Mr. Trask is, number one, what he's going to do is provide a memorandum. He's going to, I guess that will lead to a contract amendment to address some of the things that he heard this evening. And, but we nevertheless, we still have this agenda item outstanding. So what I would like, and I'm going to ask you, Commissioner Eisner, if you would do this, is to make a motion to approve the invoice, if that's your preference, or whatever you would like to do, and then add to that motion what you would like to see in return, and that way this commission would consider that and vote on that action. I think as a minimum, it's going to be an amendment. I think whatever else would go with that. So if you want to take a second to think about that, or are you ready?
I'm okay. I, I'll do a motion to approve this with a follow-up of a contract that's acceptable to the commission.
An amended, okay. An amended contract, whatever.
An amended, because I'm not going back in the prior bills. That's ridiculous.
No, I understand.
I'm just talking about this.
So the motion is to approve the invoice with the, with the condition that the city attorney will bring forward a contract amendment to reflect the travel charges, as you had suggested.
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second to that effect?
Second.
Second to that motion?
The vice mayor said second. The vice mayor.
Oh, you did. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on that? Roll call.
Okay, mayor, this, just to be clear, this is for item two A only, correct? Okay. Commissioner Kuyas?
Is it, is it for two A and B?
Say it again, Michelle.
From my understanding, on the motion on the floor right now, it's only for item two A.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you're only voting on two A. Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius?
Yes. Okay. If there are no questions on item two B, then if we can have a motion to approve that invoice in a second, please.
We've hit seven-thirty. Do we need to start?
Do we have a second, please?
Second.
Okay. If there are no more, well, I didn't go to public comments on that one. Are there any public comments concerning the second invoice? Okay. Just a question for me. I'm going to ask this of all the commissioners, not just Commissioner Eisner. Did anybody look at that second invoice for travel charges? You did. And you saw none. Is there anything that you saw with that contract? I mean, the invoice that would give you pause to think?
No.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second, so if we go to, we had public comments, there weren't none, if we could get roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius?
Yes. All right, item three, now it's Commissioner Eisner's turn again.
Oh, now we're good. Mayor, we've got seven-thirty for the public hearings.
Ah, thank you, Mr. Trask. All right, it's seven-thirty. By our rules of procedure, we stop and we go to the ordinances and resolutions, and then we'll pick this up, starting with item three. At the end of those... then we'll pick this up, starting with item three, at the end of those ordinances and resolutions. So ordinance and resolutions, we'll begin with item 10, Resolution 2021-27, authorizing submission of rollover library construction grant. Mr. Trask, if it's not a quasi-judicial, if you could read that by title only, please.
Yes, Mayor, this is Resolution 2022-27, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, authorizing the submission of a rollover application for public library construction grant funds, providing required assurances and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of Resolution 2022-27 by title only.
Thank you. City Manager La Course, if you'd like to...
Yes, if you remember, we had an item where you had to authorize me. I had to email to the library grant people that we were considering rolling over the grant, and then I had to come back, and we have to do before August 1, we have to do the resolution. This is the rollover and ask again for the $500,000 grant that we did not get from the library last time. So there are requirements, this would be the final requirement to prove this resolution, and then we're back in the hopper for the grant for the coming year.
Thank you. Are there any public comments concerning this item? I see our librarians in the back as well. There are none. Commissioners, are there any questions concerning this item?
Mayor, make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-27.
2022.
2022, sorry.
Ms. Meneses, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulaus?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lot?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius?
Yes. Item 11, Resolution 2022-25, budget resolution. Mr. Trask, may I have that read by title?
Yes, Mayor. This is Resolution 2022-25. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year 2021-22. That was a reading of Resolution 2022-25 by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Trask. City Manager La Course?
Yes, it's that time of year again when we do our budget resolutions. So I'll have Ron Herring present this one to you.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Ron Herring, Finance Director. And yes, we try to do two, three budget resolutions during the year. We did one in January. This one's sort of called my mid-year one, but it's a little bit past mid-year. 2022-25 is being brought before you to budget for items that have not previously been budgeted for in fiscal year 2022. I've tried to list all the items in the cover letter. A good portion of the larger items is due to capital projects requiring additional funding as they were approved by the board, and a couple ARPA projects, and there are some other smaller items within there. I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
If you could just give us the total of the budget resolution that we're approving this evening.
The total of the budget resolution is $4,998,497.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. Are there any public comments concerning this? I see none. Commissioners, any commissioner comments? I see none here. I have none. Roll call, please.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Oh, sorry.
I'll second.
Commissioner Kulaus, second it.
Commissioner Kulaus?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lot?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius?
Yes. Okay. The next one is a quasi-judicial hearing, and there's three items here, two, three ordinances. So what we're gonna do is, as far as the discussion and the hearing itself, we will take all three on at the same time, but we'll use item 12A to key off as far as this process itself. So, Mr. Trask, if you can go ahead and introduce this item, read it by title, give us the instructions, and swear on anybody that needs to be sworn in.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this is a quasi-judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-judicial hearing, it is not the Board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the Board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing, and apply those findings of fact to privilege established criteria contained in the code of ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The Board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent substantial and relevant to the issues. If the competent substantial and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the Board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent substantial and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the Board is required by law to find against the applicant. And with that being said, anyone that's gonna speak on these three agenda items, if you could stand up, raise your right hand, and be sworn under oath. Raise your right hand. You swear that the testimony you're about to give is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, yes.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm gonna go ahead and read ordinance 2022-15 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, annexing 1.204 acres, more or less of real property located at the southwest corner of Lilian Avenue and Curlew Place, application 22-46, providing for findings and providing for an effective date. This was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only with a map on April 27, 2022, and May 4, 2022. Mayor?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Trask. Ms. Vincent, I see that the applicant is here. This is a second reading this evening. I should also ask, is there anybody here? I've seen some new people get up and raise their hands. Is anybody here that claims to be an affected party? Okay. Has any commissioner had any ex parte communications concerning this matter? All righty. Let's go ahead and open the hearing. Ms. Vincent, if you can make your presentation, please.
With the pleasure of the Board, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I would just enter into the record, the previous staff reporting and presentation. There's been no new information to add to the agenda packet or for consideration, so I would recommend approval of the application as it was previously presented to the Board for the ordinance annexing the property as well. The site is at the southwest corner of Lilian Avenue and Curlew Place. You have an annexation ordinance, a land use map amendment, bringing the property from Pinellas County into the City of Tarpon Springs, no change to the land use, and then a rezoning from the Pinellas County designation of R3 to the City of Tarpon Springs zoning of R70A. So there's no new information to present, so I would just recommend approval of those three ordinances as previously presented to the Board.
Okay. Does any commissioner have any questions of Ms. Vincent?
Yes, I do.
Vice Mayor Lot?
I just have one nagging question. Hi, Renee.
Hi.
There's a couple places within this application where it states that the applicant did not want to be annexed. So I'm confused as to, the planning and zoning board came up with the fact that not only did they not want to be annexed, but they were willing to pay the uplift charge for services, and yet we're continuing with the annexation and all that sort of stuff. Can you explain to me what changed between that time?
The, it's the, this is one of those that they're compelled to be annexed because they are seeking city utility services, so our ordinances require them to be annexed in order to obtain services.
Okay, I misunderstood. I thought the last time we went through this, I had heard that they could still obtain city services and pay an upcharge fee. I believe that's when we went through the abus.
They, they... I'm looking at the city attorney here.
I'll jump in here.
Thank you.
So the answer is that they could. If they couldn't have been annexed, we would have them sign an annexation agreement that basically says they can sit out there so long as they're not contiguous to the city properties, jurisdictional property, they can remain to do that. But once they become contiguous, then they're required by law, your own code, to annex into the city to get those services.
Okay, thanks for the better understanding.
Yeah, no, sorry. And they have expressed that they would prefer to not have to annex, but there's, our code compels them to annex.
I understand. I just was confused as to what the specifics were.
I'll just send Commissioner Eisner. I have none. I want to ask the applicant if they've got any questions for Mrs. Vincent? Just strictly of questions for Mrs. Vincent. Okay, thank you. Ms. Vincent, do you want us to take the staff report and accept it into evidence?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The applicant, it's your turn to make a presentation if you would like. If you've got anything to say in support of this, you do not, okay. The commission, no presentation, but you can still ask a question if you'd like. No questions. Ms. Vincent, I assume you have no cross-examination?
No, sir.
Let's go ahead and go to public, I should say, yes, we have no affected party, so let's go to public comments. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item? Okay. We're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Would you like to make a summation or closing statement?
No, sir.
We're closing the public hearing. Does a commissioner have any, any commissioner have any comments concerning this matter? Okay. What I'd like to get is a motion to approve in a second, please, on this item.
Motion to approve ordinance 2022-15 annexation.
And I'll second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulaus?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lot?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius?
Yes. Mr. Trask, if you could read item 12B by title, please.
Yes, Mayor. This is ordinance 2022-17, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the future land use map for 1.204 acres, more or less, of real property located on the southwest corner of Lilian Avenue and Curlew Place, from Pinellas County land use designation RL residential low to City of Tarpon Springs land use designation RL residential low, application number 22-46, providing for findings and providing for an effective date. This was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on April 27, 2022, and May 4, 2022. This is the second and final reading.
Thank you. The public hearing part remains closed, but I need to ask the commission if any of you have any questions concerning this particular item. You do not. Roll call, please.
We need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-17.
Second.
Thank you all.
Commissioner Kulaus?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lot?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius?
Yes. Mr. Trask, item 12C, please.
This is ordinance 2022-16, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the official zoning atlas of the City of Tarpon Springs for 1.20, I'm sorry, 1.204 acres, more or less, of real property located at the southwest corner of Lilian Avenue and Curlew Place, from Pinellas County zoning designation R3, single-family residential, to City of Tarpon Springs zoning designation R70A, single-family residential, application 22-46, providing for findings and providing for an effective date. That was the second and final reading of ordinance 2022-16 by title only. It also was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on April 27, 2022, and May 4, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Trask. Do the commission have any comments on this item? May I have a motion in a second, please, to approve?
Motion to approve ordinance 2022-16.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulaus?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lot?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius?
Yes. Okay, that ends item 12. Thank you very much, applicants. We're gonna go to item 13, ordinance 2022-18. Mr. Trask, if you can go ahead and read that by title, give us the instructions, and also, I guess everyone else has been sworn in on everybody, but you might wanna check on that again.
Yes, sir. So this is a quasi-judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-judicial hearing, it is not the Board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the Board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing, and apply those findings of fact to privilege established criteria contained in the code of ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The Board may only consider evidence at the hearing that the law considers competent substantial and relevant to the issues. If the competent substantial and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established code of ordinances, then the Board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent substantial and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established code of ordinances, then the Board is required by law to find against the applicant. I'll read ordinance 2022-18 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the official zoning map of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, for 0.32 acres, more or less, of real property located at 467 Penn Street, located at the north side of Penn Street, approximately 110 feet west of North Levis Avenue, from zoning designation R70A, single-family residential, to zoning designation R60, one and two-family residential, providing for findings and providing an effective date. That was the second and final reading of ordinance 2022-18 by title only. It was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on June 1, 2022, and July 6, 2022. Anyone that's gonna speak on this particular agenda item, if you could stand up, raise your right hand, if you haven't been sworn in already. I'm gonna swear you in. Anyone that wants to speak on this one? All right, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Vincent, is the applicant here?
Ah, there you are, thank you.
That's right. Thank you. I should ask the commission, or ask, is there anyone here who claims to be an affected party? I don't believe there is. I don't see anybody. I need to ask the commission whether any commissioners had ex parte communications concerning this matter. Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and open the hearing. Ms. Vincent, your presentation, please.
Thank you. This is application 22-53 for property at 467 Penn Street. This is a, two single-family lots that have been under common ownership. They're currently zoned R70A. They are proposing to rezone those to R60. This will allow those two original lots of record to be individually built upon with a single-family house. There's no new information to enter into the record since first reading, and I would enter our presentation that was previously presented in staff materials into the record and recommend approval as previously presented. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Do any commissioners have any questions concerning this? This is a second reading as well. I want to ask the applicant, do you have any questions of Mrs. Vincent? Okay. Ms. Vincent, would you like the staff report to be accepted into evidence?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. The applicant, you have your opportunity to make a presentation if you'd like. You do not? Ms. Vincent, obviously you don't have any questions, public comments? Are there any public comments concerning this item? Okay. Okay. Any closing argument or summation?
No, sir.
Okay, Ms. Vincent. Okay, we're closing the public hearing. Does any commissioner have any comments concerning this matter? Okay, none. If I can get a motion in a second to approve this item?
Motion to approve ordinance 2022-18, application 22-53 rezoning.
Second.
Second. Thank you very much, Commissioner Eisner. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Koolas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lott?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticus?
Yes. Okay, we're going to move on to, thank you very much, applicants. We're going to move on to item 14, ordinance 2022-06. Mr. Trask, if you could go ahead and get us started by reading the ordinance by title, give us the instructions on the quasi-judicial, and check again if there's anyone here that needs to be sworn in.
Yes, Mayor. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to privilege-established criteria containing the code of ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent substantial and relevant to the issues. If the competent substantial and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established code of ordinances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent substantial and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established code of ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. This is a reading of ordinance 2022-06 by title only. An ordinance to the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the official zoning map of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, for 16.52 acres, more or less, of real property located at the southwest corner of East Spruce Street and North Jasmine Avenue, from zoning designation RM residential multifamily to zoning designation RPD residential plan development, approving a preliminary plan development for Cypress Trails Townhomes residential plan development, application number 22-62, providing for waivers of design requirements of the Land Development Code, providing for conditions, providing for findings, and providing for an effective date. That was the second final reading of ordinance 2022-06 by title only. This was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on January 5, 2022, April 6, 2022, June 1, 2022, and July 13, 2022. With that being said, is there anyone in the audience that's going to speak on this agenda item? You raise your right hand and be sworn under oath, please. You swear the testimony you're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? You've, you've already been sworn in, haven't you?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Trask. Ms. Vincent, the applicant is here?
Yes.
Okay. That's fine. Not right now, but that's, thank you very much. I, I should ask, is there anyone here that claims to be an affected party? Sir, if you could come forward and, and state your name and, and, or, and the lady that's with you, if you'd like, if you're both affected parties, or both of you are representing by the one individual? Do you?
Yeah. I'll represent both of us. Joel Bouchard, 769 Grand Cypress Lane.
Okay, thank you. I know you live in the development, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, we'll accept you as an affected party. Is there anyone else? Okay. I need to ask the commission, does any commissioner have any ex parte communications since the last hearing on this item? Is that correct, Mr. Trask, since the last hearing?
It's already on the record, though, the previous context, so I think that it would just be from the last time.
Since the last hearing? Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, I mean, the, the applicant and one of the engineers came and talked me at, in one of our breaks at the last meeting, so it was just about the agenda. There's nothing substantial that was said.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and, thank you very much for that. I'm going to go ahead and open the hearing. Ms. Vincent, if you could go ahead and make your presentation, please.
Thank you. This is application 22-62 for Cypress Trails preliminary plan development. This is, consists of an ordinance 2022-06, which rezones the property from, to residential plan development, and actually approves the preliminary plan development. Again, this is second reading of, for this project. The, if you recall, this, this project was begun quite some time ago, was in, ended up being, the first phase being developed of about seven acres. Phase two now, before you, really is a continuation of that first phase, and contains a little over nine acres. There are a series of waivers for the wetland buffers and setbacks, building facade staggering, and the light pole and designing requirements. The ordinance of approval does have an extensive set of conditions that were discussed at first reading. There's been no changes to that since, since that, that first reading. I do want to just state, there were some things that the commission discussed at the last meeting that we have picked up as staff during the final plan development process, that being the requirement that the southern driveway is a, is a full regular entrance, the requirement that the recreation facilities be included on the plan set, and addressing the layout of the parking with respect to that existing burrow pit, requesting a letter from Duke Energy approving the uses and layout for the, the parking lot, walkway, and recreation facilities under that easement, and also, the, the boards expressed desire to have some additional buffer in that one area where the, where the units are right up against the wetland, there is no wetland buffer. So we've conveyed all of that as part of the final plan development process that's ongoing with the applicant, so I just did want to let the board know that we were addressing that as part of the final plan development. With that, I'll answer any questions that you might have about, about this particular application.
Just to start off, just clarification on what you just described. Those items that you just listed are in addition to the conditions?
Sure.
And what you're, what you're representing and is part of the record, that those items that were brought up by the commission will in fact be addressed by the staff at final development. So we would see those coming back as part of that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Does any commissioner have any questions concerning this item? What you just heard?
I actually have one.
Go ahead.
I, I'm going to paraphrase here because I don't have it all in front of me. We had suggested that they improve the wetback, or the, the wetland setback?
Yes.
By the time we get their final plan of development. What if they don't? What if there's no adjustment? What, what happens then? I know it's a, it's a suggestion, but...
It, it was not put as a specific condition of approval. It was discussed by the board, by at least one board member, that they would like to see that, and that asked that the applicant work with staff during final plan development to try to accomplish that. It was not mandatory, so I, I think at this point, if that's something that you want to see some adjustment or increase from zero to something, you may want to put, add that as a condition of approval if you're, if you're hard and fast on that. We're, we're, we're already addressing it as part of the final development plan process. We're requesting it. All we can do is note whether or not the applicant's willing to do it, so, you know, hopefully they will.
Yeah, I just...
You can ask the applicant. I think that might be a better que, a better question directed at the applicant, so...
I have, I have a hard time with zero.
I understand. Understand.
So no more questions. I'll ask the applicant, actually.
Okay.
See what he intends to do.
Other questions? Okay. It's commission comments. Does the applicant have any questions of Ms. Vincent? Okay. Do, do the affected parties have any question concerning Mrs. Vincent's presentation?
No, sir.
Okay. Ms. Vincent, would you like your staff report accepted into evidence?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. The applicant, if you would like to make your presentation now, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. Just wanted to come up and, just to let you know that, you know, we concur with staff. We've been working with, with staff. As we mentioned last time, this is an ongoing project. Both halves of this project have, have to move forward for, for it to be a complete project and satisfy all of the requirements. So we understand there are things that have to be done. You know, we've been working closely with staff, and, you know, we, we agree and concur that we're going to address those issues. Basically, we've also, in terms of the, in terms of the setbacks and the wetlands, we're also providing additional areas to satisfy those requirements. So if you go into the depths of it, you find out that, you know, these areas have been, have been addressed, and I think if staff is happy, then, and we concur, then I think, you know, you should take some comfort in that, that your, your staff is going to make sure that things, things are done.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Lott, you had a question of the applicant?
Yeah, so, before we do that, we need to get his name.
Oh, yes, if you could give us your name and address.
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry. William, William Conrad, 5286 Pointiana Circle, Newport Ritchie, Florida, 34653. I was the original planner on the project way back, and so, that's why I'm here.
Thank you, Mr. Conrad.
Yes, and just here to answer any questions.
Vice Mayor Lott, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Conrad, nice to see you again.
Thank you.
So, I understand you've been working with the staff. My concern, obviously, is the fact that we went from, from, you know, as we're moving this to a, to a different designation, from a, a 50-foot setback to a 0-foot setback. I don't have problems with the original project being 7'5", I think it was, to 15 or whatever. That's, 0 seems to be pretty severe in my, my estimation. I know you put silt screens up there, or silt fences up there, et cetera. Are you planning on putting an actual hard fence on the back as well?
Well, I'll, I'll have the developer answer that question, but just also, just a point of clarification, maybe planning staff can help us also. When we went, when we went, when we came back to you, we went with the RPD process and plan development process, and so consequently, the standards have changed. So it makes it look as if we're...
Yeah, I understand.
Remember, remember, we went through all of that. So basically, we're doing what we did before. It's just that now, of course, because we have the different standards, it looks like we're doing something different when we're really not.
Well, actually, not really. If you take a look at phase one, you've got some setback in most places from, from the, from the, from the protected area. In this particular instance with phase two, you're actually encroaching in a couple of places, so there is a little bit of a difference.
Yeah.
Granted, we're talking about few feet here.
Right, exactly.
But it's still important that we don't disturb what we can't...
Understood, but I think this, this, this may be a good point of clarification to kind of, so visualize it and understand what it's really going to look like, so...
Mr. Lindiakis, let's wrap up with Mr. Conrad first. Any other commission comments?
Questions? Questions?
Questions, sorry. You're right. Any comments from the commission? Okay. Ms. Vincent, do you have any questions for Mr. Conrad?
No.
Do the affected parties have any questions for Mr. Conrad?
No, sir.
Okay. That's fine. Mr. Lindiakis, if you could come forward now and give us your name and address. Thank you.
My name's Manuel Lindiakis. I live at 773 Anclot Landings Drive, Tarpon Springs, Florida. With regards to the 0 setbacks, we're, we're not going to have any building structures at the 0 setbacks because there's going to be a retaining wall, and it's only going to apply to three lots over here at the south end of the wetland. And then you can see over here on the, yes, right there, there's three lots that's real tight. So we're not going, we, we were going to encroach before. We're not encroaching into the wetland. And as far as being at 0, there's going to be a wall there to hold up the, because we have to raise the elevation, but the buildings are going to be five or six feet away from that.
Uh-huh.
So it's not actually, even though we're allowed to be at 0, you can't put a building right on top of the retention wall. You got to give them a little bit of a backyard back there.
Understand. Is the wall going to be contiguous? I couldn't figure that out from the plans I looked at.
Yeah, the wall goes, it's going to connect to, to phase one, and it's going to come around where it has to hold up the, the two or three feet that we got to raise a site.
So it's going to be contiguous around the whole wetlands?
No, not, not around the whole wetland, just where, it's going to connect to phase one, and then it's going to come, come around part of phase two, and then that's it. Just around where those other three buildings are.
Yeah, I couldn't, when I was looking at the plans, it was dotted lines everywhere. I couldn't, I couldn't turn it off.
So there's no, there's no actually a 0 setback, because, like I said, you can't put the person's house right on top of a retention wall, and then there's no yard. So we're putting about a five, five to six foot yard in the back.
Okay, so the staff has asked that you work to reduce that, or increase that buffered, buffered zone? What, what could be possible?
I can't. I'm out of the...
Not yet.
I'm sorry.
I'm not, I'm not asking you an M. Stating a fact.
They requested that we go back to the original 15-foot setback encroachment area, which I think our new plan goes back to the 4,340-something square feet that was before. So we're not, we're not increasing our encroachment in the 15-foot setback, and we're giving them back, you know, 15,000 or 20,000 square feet of setback.
So is that doable for you to, what, what they requested as far as increasing the setback?
We're not, we're not incre, yeah, yeah, it's going to work. Yeah, it has to. I mean...
All right. Thank you very much.
Are there any other commission comments?
Questions?
Just for comments, questions, questions, questions. Mr. Lindiakis, just for clarification, I, I know what you're saying. I just need the clarification. The 0 setback is for the lot, not the building?
The 0 setback is for the lot?
Right.
No, it's, it's, I think the 0 setback is for the building, but we're not, we're not, we're not taking advantage of that, because you can't put the building on top of a retention wall. The lot can go wherever you want it to.
I understand, and the building will be some distance away from the property line?
Yes.
Of the lot dimension. Okay.
Right.
Vice, I'm sorry, Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, not to, to beat this one over, but isn't it 0 buffer, and then you still have a setback of the building of five or six feet or so?
No, it's a 0 buffer. Like I said, I could put, I could put the property line wherever I want as far as the property setback. So it's the encroachment area.
Okay. Thanks.
Real tight area. Like I said, I'm, I've got 160-foot easement. I can't do nothing in. And there's only three lots in a phase two that really are, are getting close to
Are there any other, yes, Commissioner Eisner?
So this, the setback that you said, this five feet is only in the corner, correct? Because it's pretty much the same setback as the lot right next to it?
No, the setback is, is on that one group of buildings there on the south end of the wetland.
So they're all setbacks of five foot?
No, the one, the one lot, if you could see where the, where the, where the, the wetland curves up, that's got plenty of room there. The other ones got plenty. There's like two or three lots that are real tight, and that's where it's going to be five foot away from the, the wet, the jurisdictional line.
So these little squares that we're seeing is not the building?
Where?
Um, it's hard to mean.
Yeah, those are the building.
Those are the buildings. So there are two lots that have five-foot setbacks, correct? That's what I asked.
Right.
Because I, I didn't want, for clarification, that it was only that one that was, that had the 0 buffer. The one that doesn't have 0 buffer also has a five-foot setback. So there, it's more uniform than just one corner.
Right. The, the zoning permits us to have a 0 set, a 0 setback, but we, we're not using the 0 setback because you can't put a building on top of a retention wall, and then, you know, you want, the person has to have a little bit of a backyard instead of, you know, falling into the, to the, into the wetland.
I got you.
When they come out of their backyard, you know, out of their porch.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Questions? I got that one right. Ms. Vincent, do you have any cross-examination of Mr. Conrad or Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Lindiakis?
No.
Okay. Do the affected parties have any questions for Mr. Lindiakis?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lindiakis.
Thank you.
The applicants now, if you'd like to come forward? I'm sorry, the affected party, if you'd like to come, do you have a, do you have anything that you'd like to say concerning this? You're an affected party?
I just want to say thank you, Mayor, Commission, and staff for all your efforts in approving all of the additional conditions and concerns that we've had. At this point, with this moving forward, we have nothing additional to, to question or ask for. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Vincent, any questions for the, okay, for the affected party? Mr. Lindiakis, Mr. Conrad, any questions? No? Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions? I should have asked you first. Okay. Do we have public comments? If you'd like to come forward for public comments. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and representing clergy and various ambassadorships, Women of Works clergy and things of that sort. We're here to ask for the town hall once again to string lights on alternate 19 behind the town hall so we can walk peacefully through alternate, alternate 19 there. And one, one thing I brought up, our, our main mission, church mission was pro life. And now, aquariums, we can say, fish aquariums. They did it in Washington DC. Mr. Hess was writer, Barry, go, fish aquariums, to have fish to multiply in aquariums. This is in New Jersey. It was a suggestion in town hall, they multiply immediately with a little bit of bread. I guess aquariums up, up over here, I didn't know so much about. You have fish aquariums, where they can multiply, fish multiplying, and through the town hall, maybe the church, because all the homeless, they said Shepherd's Center, because there's various forces, you know, and homeless are very hungry. You say food, try living without it. The one that's, to the town hall, maybe to fund or through the church, fish aquariums, like this in Jersey, to multiply the fishes to feed the pork. Thank you very much, Governor.
Thank you, sir.
We need a name.
May I, may I have your name, please? Your name and address?
Reverend Brad Palza.
Brad, yeah.
Okay.
We'll get the information later. Mr. Delakis?
Okay, Ms. Marcus has kindly donated two minutes of her time for me. Peterlax 514 Ashland Avenue. Too bad you don't have a little bigger map, or even like the big ones that sometimes the planning and zoning board used to get. Because you would find that in those little gaps where that retaining wall is, it says upper, upper impact... it says upland buffer impact, and then right below it, that little hashed area says enhanced upland buffer. And then upland buffer impact, enhanced upland buffer. Enhanced upland buffer impact, then there's a stem wall, and then enhanced upland buffer. So what they're doing, they're building that retaining wall in the buffer area right up to the edge of the wetlands. And Mr. Lindiakas at the last meeting said I was a liar because I was saying there was wetland impacts. I think we have a different interpretation of wetland impacts as a builder constructor. If you put any one inch into the actual wetlands, that's an impact. To me, as an environmentalist, putting a retaining wall and a building, because you were correct, Commissioner Eisner, those little lines are the buildings, and if you look at those lines on this map, it's actually right into that buffer area. So my interpretation is you are going to impact the wetlands. Now, page two of the staff report, wetland permits, the comments from the Southwest Florida Water Management District are unknown and may change the site plan. And the project people say wetland impacts have been removed. But where's SWF MUD? Where have you gotten anything from SWF MUD as to what their determination is with regards to that? And then below that, insufficient rationale, wetland impacts have been removed, but buffer impacts have to be reduced and will be mitigated. Page, I want to also go jump a little bit, I got some time, page ten. Let's go to page ten. No, wait, where is it? Page ten, twelve. There it is, yeah, it is page ten.
Page ten?
Upland buffer impacts. The applicant is also requesting a waiver of the city required fifty-foot wetland buffer and a waiver of portions of the twenty-five-foot buffer required by the Southwest Florida Water Management District. How is it y'all have the authority to waive their requirement? Have you gotten anything from SWF MUD saying that they would be willing to waive it? And to compensate for the SWF MUD-related buffer impacts, amount of total upland buffer has been increased elsewhere. However, staff is recommending the further reduction of upper buffer impacts. Well, how about, let's reduce the wetland impacts, because basically in the staff report, it indicates on page six, bottom page, wetland buffer impacts. Original ninety-five unit project proposed no wetland impacts. So he's wanting to put in three extra units, whereas before he could have gotten it through. And it says here, the applicant has three units over the fifty-nine units originally requested for a total of twenty, sixty-two new units. The increased upland buffer impacts appear to result from the new units and the reconfigured roadway. The additional upland impacts to accommodate units cannot be supported. Your staff says that right here. We tend to ignore some of the things staff says and pick out the other things. So Commissioner Lunt was right to bring up what's zero. And if you look at a bigger version of the map, you'll see that these buildings do go up to the retaining wall. I can't tell you the numbers, and even Mr. Lindiakas said he can change the property size because he's got all that wetland in it. In fact, on this page, RFD requirements, side yard ten feet, corner lot fifteen feet, rear yard ten feet, yet all of those show seven and a half feet for, and then on rear yard, seven and a half feet for selected lots. So by his definition of what he told you of how he could set the lot size, some of these internal lots that abut up against the wetlands, technically, yeah, he can draw that property line way out to there. He'll, he can give you a plat for that. He's not building out there, but the property line can be out there. So there's a little shift in here of what is being told and what you're eventually going to see. I don't see why it couldn't go back to the original plans of the fifty-nine, and it would take out those three units. And then also, where are the review standards for waivers as superior alternative, protection of significant features, deprivation of reasonable use, technical impracticality? Well, the technical impracticality is the property he first bought in the first place. He knew what he was getting. As far as deprivation of reasonable use, it says deprive the owner of all reasonable use. Doesn't mean some, so removing three units doesn't deprive him of all the reasonable use. So I would say have him go back to a revised plan with less impacts to the environment, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delakis. Are there any, hang on, Mr. Lindiakas, are there any other public comments? See now, Mr. Lindiakas, do you have any rebuttal? That's according to our quasi-judicial procedures, I need to ask that question.
Again, Mr. Delakis gets up here and takes everything out of context, okay? First of all, there's no wetland impacts, okay? There is an impact to the fifteen-foot setback, which we took the city's advice, and we're lowering it to the original mount, which was four thousand, five hundred and sixty-four square feet. So he comes up here again, taking everything out of context. There's no wetland impacts. There is a buffer impact, but it's not all the way to the wetland line, so it's not a zero. It doesn't go all the way to zero because we're going to give them a five-foot yard. Secondly, he's talking about the seven and a half foot rear setback that we're asking for. It only applies to the lots that are up against Jasmine Avenue and the lots that are over here on the west end of the property. And that's just to, so it applies in conformance with Phase One. So it's, it's easy for somebody to come in here and pick little things out of a whole project and try to make an argument. His argument, I don't know what, what he, he hasn't even been to my property. Have you been to my property?
We can't allow that.
Mr. Lindiakas?
So, so you know, he takes everything out of context. This, we've been over this for, for the longest time with the city. We changed the plan, and we just asked, let me get started and finish this thing off. That's all I'm asking.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Ms. Vincent, do you have any closing summation as far as anything that you heard that may provide some clarification as far as dealing with it at the final development?
I think the, we'll continue to work with them to, 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 I think where the, where the disconnect is, is when you're saying a buffer, and then there's a rear yard requirement, and then sometimes those things overlap, sometimes they don't. And so I think in this instance, you know, we want the buildings to be pushed as far away from that wetland as possible. And we'll continue to work with the developer to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Vincent. Okay, that closes the public hearing. Want to go to commission comments now? Uh, commission comments, that's correct. Any discussion by Commissioners, Vice Mayor Lunt, Commissioner Eisner, Commissioner Carr, Commissioner Kuyas? I hear none. I'd like to have a motion on this item in a second, please.
Motion to approve the 2022-06, application 2262, application with the conditions that staff has in their report as written.
And may, may I ask, there's, were certain representations that Ms. Vincent said that they will deal with at final site development plan? If you could include that as part of the motion?
Including what Ms. Vincent had just spoke about, okay.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
No further comments. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Mr. Eisner?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticus?
Yes. Let's go to Resolution 2022-20, Safe Streets. Mr. Trask, could you read that by title, please?
Thank you, Mayor. This is Resolution Number 2022-20, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, supporting the implementation of Safe Streets Pinellas Action Plan, adopting a Vision Zero policy to eliminate transportation-related fatalities and serious injuries, providing for conflicts and severability, and providing for an effective date. That was the reading of Resolution 2022-20 by title only.
Thank you. City Manager La Course, would you like to introduce this?
Yeah, again, we're bringing this item back. I think we've covered the issues in our rewrite of the resolution. So I think with this rewrite, and the commissioners have had an opportunity to call Mr. Blanton if they wished. So I think we have the issues covered here, and we're ready to move forward with this resolution in this form.
Thank you. Do, does the public have any comments concerning this item? Okay. Do the, does the commissioner have any questions?
Questions or comments?
Comments, questions, it doesn't.
Comments, I have. I just wanted to share, I did have my conversation with Mr. Blanton. He was totally unaware of how others would have taken some of the drawings that were in it. He apologized for that. He did not realize it as it was written. I did explain to him that in theory itself, that I could only speak for myself, but I did not want to see, I do also want to see zero deaths and, but in addition, I asked a question as far as where he got statistics, and not much of what he wrote had any statistics behind it. I also asked him why there was a, a blue hyperlink referring to New York police pulling over black and Hispanic at excessive levels, what that has to do with Pinellas County and our Area 19. And I really didn't get an answer, so it was like, it was a little bit of hodgepodge that was just being put together. But the way it's written now, it covers everybody equally. And I'm just glad to see that he understood that it should be for all, not just some. And there is a current report that just came out that said Pasco County in nineteen is probably one of the worst in, 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 in the whole area for deaths, for pedestrians and bicyclists. I also made mention to him, I do ride a bicycle, and Klosterman in Alt. Nineteen is literally a nightmare. They, there's one of the few areas that's no turn on red. They all make turn on red, and they're all looking the other way, and they don't see the bicycles on the trail ready to go because they get a, a white light to go, and I've almost been hit myself. So I asked him why they don't put in something like what you'd have at a railroad crossing, coming down, holding the traffic. So he thanked me, it was a good idea. If you want to stop people from being killed, that's the perfect place. Vehicles are hitting cars, cars, bicyclists all the time, so that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments? Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, I do want to say good job to whoever ordered Smith this resolution. I think there's some great points in here that call out the City of Tarpon Springs specifically. That really prioritizes safety above speed. I do like that comment specifically. And I hope to, I hope to look into that speed limits around the City of Tarpon Springs further as well in the near future. Thank you.
That's it. Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yeah, I also had a chance to talk to Mr. Blanton and came up with some similar, I don't know, comments or, or observations as, as Commissioner Eisner. There was some lack of statistics and some, some assumptions made because of that. I also read the recent report on Pasco, and what they had done is they actually looked for pedestrian death hotspots in the country. The stretch of nineteen through Newport Ritchie and, and Port Ritchie had six of them, which made it the, actually the worst in the country. Ours actually got upgraded a little bit because we've had less lately. But anyway, I understand the whole focus of this particular resolution, and I'm totally one hundred percent behind it as it's written.
I'm going to support this, obviously, that's not an issue, but it's just, it's, it's not even bittersweet. It's really, really sad when we had an FDOT representative here that made representations. When the fatality rates get high enough, then they'll start looking into the safety. I'm not sure how much higher fatality rate, and this is FDOT District Seven. I'm not sure how much higher fatality rates have to get before FDOT District Seven starts doing something on US-19. We approved a major project on that, and all we got as far as one median cut increase, and that's it. And that's supposed to make it a safe project. That's all I'm going to say. If there are no other comments, may I have a, a motion in a second, please?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Mr. Eisner?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticus?
Yes. Let's go to item sixteen, Resolution 2022-26, gratitude for state project funding. City Attorney Trask, if you could read that by title, please.
Mayor, Commissioners, Resolution 2022-26, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, expressing gratitude to state representatives for state funding awards. On behalf of the City of Tarpon Springs and providing for an effective date, that was reading Resolution 2022-26 by title only.
Okay, thank you. Are there any, City Manager La Course, would you like to?
Just as we've done in the past, you know, we're thanking Representative Sprouse, Representative La Bala, Senator Hooper, and the Governor for the grants that we've got, and the form of resolution is by as formal as we can get of a thanks to them. So, so we're bringing these forward as we will in future grants, if the Board so wishes, to send to them. After you approve it tonight, we will send them to each of these people who are involved in getting us the two grants.
Thank you. Does the public have any comments on this item?
Peterlax 514 Ashland Avenue. It is right to thank those who provide for us. But I do have to point something out. That's their job. That is their job as representatives to represent us, to help us return monies back to the community that we have sent through to Tallahassee through various functions. It wasn't read, but I'll read it. The city received notification of award of a state budget appropriation of nine hundred and twenty-five thousand for the first project's construction phase, which is the West Martin Luther King and South Spring Boulevard area, and then six hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and nineteen for the second project's construction phase, which is the Mango Street connector. Total project funding of one million, five hundred and ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars. Yes, we should be grateful for getting that money returned back to us. I would like to add another whereas. Whereas these same representatives asked Governor DeSantis for three million dollars for the West Klosterman Preserve. Governor DeSantis chose to veto it out. Yet, y'all aware, he approved twenty-five million dollars to remodel the Freedom Museum in Miami, which is the Cuban Museum. Is that not a little pander into a political block? So just want to point out that these are representatives to do what they're supposed to. We are getting what we are receiving. But I would also like to say a contrast here. This is for approximately one point six million dollars. The city, I believe, is receiving over twelve million dollars of ARCA funds, American Rescue Plan funds. Is that not correct? Have y'all not had meetings discussing how to distribute that? I don't see a resolution. I don't see a resolution thanking President Biden and the Congress for passing that to get that $12 million back. So when I see that, I'll see that there's equitable attribution of accolades and gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Okay, let's go to Commission comments. Vice Mayor Lunt?
I have no comments.
Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, a couple of things. Again, I'm happy that, over the past few years, the City of Tarpon Springs has received multiple appropriations from the state. My understanding, it's something that we've, this is relatively new for the city over the past few years, so thank you to city staff for the help with filling out all applications for this. And I believe it's, what are we, close to four or five million dollars over the past few years? So this is good to help projects move forward without actually having to impact our millage rate or other projects that we have for, for the residents. In addition to, I did ask the, our executive assistant to draft some thank you letters too, to the, to the rest of elected officials. I mean, it's up to you if you want to sign them or not. I mean, I would suggest that if we could, I'll sign them as just a, a thank you note to them as well. Thanks.
Commissioner Eisner, Commissioner Kuyas?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to ask about the, the second project's construction phase for the $673,000, and that's for Mango Street. What are we doing on Mango Street? Because I know we, I know we just did some improvements...
This is Phase 1 or Phase 2 that you're talking about? Phase 1, is that correct?
Phase 2, the 600s.
Is that last stretch that we have from past the Mobile Home Park entrances, that last stretch where it left off? And there's two phases, and, and that money is to complete it. We, the cost overruns on the first side, we ran out of money to fund it, so we asked, that was one of the requests for appropriations, so we could, we could finish it. So again, when you go past the Mobile Home Park towards 19, you'll see where it goes to the old, old road. That's to finish it all the way to 19.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
From my perspective, I, I'm never shy on expressing gratitude to people that help us. I fully recognize that we're five. What's more important is the 19,000 that actually vote in Tarpon Springs, so it is their job to help us, and, and there is some incentive for them to do that. I think the resolution is an excellent way to go. It's a formal document that they each receive. As far as, I, I, I'm not real big myself on personal thank you letters unless there's some benefit to the community that I see that somebody's done, and, and I express some gratitude on my behalf, anyway, not necessarily on the behalf of the city without the approval of the City Commission. So I'm, I'm just, at this point, I'm just satisfied with the resolution. I'm aware that you had a, a letter that you wanted to have signed. I'm not, I haven't looked at it as far as what the, what's in it or anything like that. But, but at this point, I would just be happy with the resolution unless Commissioner wants to weigh in on that as well. Okay, may I have a motion to approve and a second, please?
Motion to approve. Where it is?
Twenty-two-two and twenty-six.
Resolution twenty-two-two-dash-twenty-six.
I'll second.
Second? Is there any other further comments? I want to make it clear that I don't want to discourage any Commissioner from sending in a letter on their behalf with their own personal views. That, that's the way we, we should do it. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kuyas?
Yes.
Mr. Eisner?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticus?
Yes. Okay, it's 8:37. We're going to go back to, that ends the ordinances and resolutions. We're going to go back to Item 3 of the consent item and agenda. That was pulled by Commissioner Eisner. It concerns award of a contract for cargo trailers utilizing the Sheriff's Association contract for our water and sewer departments. And I'll let the City Attorney, if you'd like to discuss that?
City Manager?
I'm sorry?
City Manager?
What did I say?
City Attorney?
Thanks.
I don't, I don't have anything to add, Mayor.
City Manager.
Would you like to say anything about that?
I've got Mr. Cigri here. I'll, I'll let, I'll let Commissioner Eisner speak to the issue, and then Mr. Cigri will be here to, to answer the questions of the Commissioner.
Thank you. So, what, the question that I had was not the purchase of this at all. I'm in agreement to it, okay? Whenever you purchase something, it comes with maintenance, it comes with storage, it comes with new brakes, new tires, new this, new that. So what I'm trying to do is explain and have us as a board consider that we make a purchase, it's not what we can afford to purchase on the onset, it's what we can afford to purchase and maintain down the road. So, like I said, I don't have an issue with this, so the question I want to ask you is what were we doing before we bought this, since we are doing? And, and then the other thing is, everybody has a wish list, okay? I know this will help you, but I need to know how much it'll help you when I get backup material, because I want to know, is this something that you're going to use? And I'll be facetious in my speech, that it's going to be a once-in-a-blue-moon type item, that we're spending $35,000, and we're going to have 20 more thousand dollars in maintenance, and you get to use it one time a year? I, I need to know that we're spending taxpayer money, and we're going to get bang for the buck. So that's really my question. It's not so much that I am worried about this purchase. I really need to see that it's going to do, have value, where it's going to save us time and money. Because we're also shorthanded on people. So it, it's just, I think, I think you understand where I'm going, and I'd love to hear your response to that.
Absolutely. Excuse me. And thank you, Mayor Vaticus and Commissioners, for having me tonight. The origin of this purchase is new. We have not had these trailers in the past. The, the purpose of these trailers is to house new equipment that has been purchased in the last couple of years by the water and sewer departments. The equipment is valve insertion machines. This is something that we've done to expand our staff capabilities and do more work in-house. As we've implemented this capability, the staff themselves have identified that this would be best stored in a trailer in a ready-to-go sort of situation. Currently, this is stored in store, stacked storage shelves within the water plant. That necessitates whenever there's a need for installing valves for like a water main brake or something like that, if the guys are coming in at like 2:00 AM or in the afternoon or something like that to address a water main brake, they have to get out the forklift, unload all this equipment, load it in the trucks, go out to the job site, and then begin. It causes delays in response time, particularly in emergency situations. So this was something that was brought to us by staff, it was funded through savings achieved on other vehicle purchases. And one thing that we really try to pride ourselves on in utilities is giving our folks the tools they need to do, to do the job. And with regard to value and people, you know, we know that, you know, there are many utilities that are crunched for staff. We want to give our folks the tools they need to do the job, because that helps with staffing, it helps with staff retention. If you give the folks the tools they need to do the job quickly and efficiently, it helps with staff retention, and also, you know, morale and things of that nature. Regarding maintenance costs, we did do some investigation at your request to Mr. Smith earlier in the week. Most recently, we had a trailer that was, it's getting closer to end of life, it's been in service for 22 years in the Parks Department. That one's used every day. The average cost over the last 22 years for that trailer has been $381 per year, which is, you know, quite affordable. This one will be used somewhat less often, it's not a daily use activity, it's more for emergency response and occasional use, you know, every, you know, several times a month, that sort of thing. So that will be, you know, probably considerably less. The most likely cost will be new tires, which will be about 800 bucks, probably at a four to five-year time span, and occasional brakes, which, you know, they have trailers in service. The Fleet Department told me will, that have never had to have, you know, brake renewal over 10-year periods, so that's likely to be very low. And lastly, you want to know about the, the use. Again, this is heavily geared towards water main brakes and doing work in-house. AWBA reports that, on average, you experience about 11 water main brakes per 100 miles of water line. We have 180 water miles of water lines, so you would expect that we will have somewhere between 10 and 20 water main breaks over the course of a typical year, and that would be an often situat, or a situation that would necessitate this sort of work. And that's just on the potable side, and we also will have another trailer that will be dedicated to the sewer side. Does that answer your questions, or do you have any additional questions?
Yeah, just quickly, you said that, so you probably have about one break a month, correct?
I don't have the statistics for us particularly, but just looking forward, that's what we would expect typically, you know, from the American Water Works system.
And would you have also the same amount for sewer, sewer breaks as well?
Sewer breaks are a little bit different, because we have a mix of pressurized pipe and gravity pipe, so you would expect that to occur on our force mains, you know, not so much on gravity sewer, those necessitate a different type of equipment for repairs.
So you, you have a place to store this and all?
Yes, this will be stored most likely at the reverse osmosis treatment facility in the parking area next to our water and distribution building.
Good. Thank you, appreciate that.
Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, I just said something that sparked an interest. Just a confirmation, you don't use the reclaimed water or the sewer valve for the portable water valves? You don't interchange them, right?
That, that's exactly the case, that is best practice is to have equipment dedicated to water and equipment dedicated to sewer, that's why we're requesting two trailers, and we have two sets of, of hydro-stopping machines.
Thank you for clarifying that.
I, you know, I'm going to say this tongue-in-cheek, you know, when you sit on the porch at Cedar Street, and you see a bunch of guys drive by in a truck, and then you see the same truck go back towards City Hall, then it comes back, and then about a half an hour later, it goes back again, and I'm sure they're running parts, because every time you dig in a hole, you don't know what you're going to find. So it's a really, really good thing that you have something that you can take with you onsite, to have all your parts in there, and, and trailers, and I understand it's new equipment as well, so I'm, I'm supportive of it. And from our perspective, as far as a policy thing, I know there's a lot of pressure as far as the water lines, yellow water, I'm sure this is probably what would be used in responding to that, flushing, changing out lines, and in addition to the sewer lines. So I'm, I'm happy that we can give the staff the equipment that they need to, to actually make things a little more efficient as far as doing that work. And, and quite frankly, it also, from our perspective, I, you know, this is council manager form of government. Once the City Commission gets involved in telling the employees how to do their job, which I know that's not what we're doing, we wind up buying the problem. You know, if this, if things aren't going well, then basically we haven't supported them, then it's our problem. If we provide everything that happens, and we still have some issues, then it, it goes to, it becomes a management issue, and then Mr. La Course has to deal with that, rather than us having become an obstacle in that process. So I'm very grateful in that, that we recognize that, and I appreciate your questions, Commissioner Eisner, in that regard.
Well, I didn't ask them what color trailer they were getting.
No, don't. Don't get into that. Is there any other question concerning this? Did I ask for public comment concerning this? I did not, no. Is there any other pub, is there any public comment concerning this item? Okay, if not, may I have a motion to approve and roll, a second, please?
Motion to approve Award 220128-C-JL for the cargo trailers.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kuyas?
Yes.
Mr. Eisner?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticus?
Yes.
I want brown trailers. No, just kidding.
Okay. Item 4, also, it was...
Commissioner Eisner.
Commissioner Eisner pulled that one. It's the award file number 220157, flooring materials, which is carpet for City Hall. We're, we're repainting the entire interior, and this is a carpet replacement for the hallways. I, I believe that's correct. Is that, City Manager La Course, got that one right? Would you like to offer a presentation on this or anything?
No, again, I, I, I'm not sure he, necessary, but Tom Function is here. I talked to the Commissioner a little bit already today, so I'll let him go in there. If there's any further questions, we'll be here to answer it.
Okay.
So, let me, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Let me start off by saying, I am not going to decide on what color you're choosing, that's not my thing. I do want to share with you, Tom, as you know, I have many years of being a flooring person, and all I wanted to do was share with you that, and, and we could do this on the side, just what kind, type of quality that you're buying. I've dealt with Shore Industries for 30, 40 years in queen carpet, I know what you're buying, I did check out everything. The only question I have is, right now, you have the carpet going up to a reducer around. Is it going to go up to the wall afterwards? Are you taking out all those reducers?
No, we're going to follow the existing ones that are there.
Okay, so, okay, so they're going to stay.
Yes.
The only other thing that I had is, how did you price flash patching when you don't know how much flash patching is going to be done?
I talked to the flooring people, I talked to my people here. They took an educated guess, and we probably kicked it up about 15% more just to be on the safe side.
Okay. The only other thing I want to do is very quickly just let you know, solution dyed nylon is the route to go, and just make sure that that's what it is, because that's going to last, it's bulletproof, so.
Yes.
That's it, very quick.
Thank you, Commissioner Eisner. Are there any other Commissioners' comments on this item? I see none, or public comments concerning this item? I see none. May I have a motion and a second, please?
You want my?
Motion.
Oh. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve.
Vice Mayor Lunt, a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Mr. Eisner?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticus?
Yes. Okay, that ends the consent agenda, let's move on.
One more.
We have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, this one is Commissioner Carr's. Authorized City Manager to sign forms, DR 4220, DR dash forty, 420 TIF, and DR dash 420 MM dash P, which is related to the millage rate for property tax. Would you, same thing, you, you're waiting for Commissioner Carr's comments. Commissioner Carr, go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I believe the City Manager sent out an email later today that just said, this is, this can be the max millage rate, but it doesn't have to be the millage rate for the budget year for 2023, so. Did I understand that correctly, Mark?
Yes.
Okay. In the back of it wasn't clear, I just want to make sure it's on the record, that that's clarified.
Okay. Is that, is that it?
That's it.
Any other Commissioner comments concerning this item? Okay, public comments concerning this item? Public comments? All right, hearing none. May I have a, a, a motion to approve in a second, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Kuyas?
Yes.
Mr. Eisner?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticus?
Yes. Now we move on to the special consent agenda. Item 7, increased file number 20024, technology solutions with related equipment and accessory utilizing the SOR CDW. City Manager La Course, I'll let you introduce that.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and bring up Suzanne, do you want to, you want to come up on this one, if there's any, any questions? Obviously, this is put on special consent because of the amount of money, and Suzanne is the, is the one to answer a lot of these, unless, of course, Ms. Lewis is here also if it's a question from the purchasing aspect, but if it's from the other aspect, Suzanne's here to answer that.
Just answer questions. Okay, let me go to...
Yeah, do you, I don't know if she wants to say anything.
You want to make a presentation, a brief presentation?
I just wanted to say that this is just taking one contract and putting it on another because this contract expired.
Thank you. Any Commissioner comments concerning this matter?
Yeah, I do.
Vice Mayor Lunt, go ahead.
Hi. I'm sorry you had to wait so long to get to, to get to this. So, the Sourcewell contract that we use for this is a percentage-off contract.
Correct.
Are items that you expect to purchase off this contract adhering to our normal purchase guidelines as far as dollar amount?
Yes, sir. We, we follow all purchasing...
So, that if they're over $25,000, we go out for bid, or whatever the particular rules are? Or are we just free to buy off this contract?
I'm going to let Janina speak to this.
Good evening. Janina Lewis, Procurement Services Director. Um, excuse me. Once you approve the dollar amount... approve the dollar amount for this particular contract, that's our benchmark, so it, it basically is, so if they have like, um, let's say, a computer buy of twenty-five thousand, that goes against the amount you're gonna approve this evening.
Uh-huh, so, but if, for example, they wanted to go out and buy a new router that was a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, could they also do that?
Yes, we could take it out to bid, this is not an exclusive contract.
I understand that's not an exclusive contract, I'm just trying to determine what items are gonna be purchased off this contract, because my thought is if we're going to be purchasing, you know, items that are larger than, say, twenty thousand dollars or, or whatever, that this is not the right contract for them. I mean, ten percent off is the maximum they offer, and I think any vendor on the street from an IT perspective is gonna beat that.
Okay, correct. Our, our policy is anything over twenty-five thousand, we normally look at, take out for bid, depending on how large the package is going to be.
Yeah, I, I understand, that's why I was trying to say, do we adhere to that, and, or do we, because I know we're just saying, okay, we have this Sourcewell contract, we're gonna give it another couple hundred thousand dollars, but that to me doesn't give it the same amount of discrimination, because, I mean, I understand the purchasing aspect of it, it's easier to use the contract and go out to bid and stuff like that, but I also know that ten percent or seven and a half percent, depending upon what you're buying from this contract, is not a significant discount as far as any end-user vendor that I know of.
Okay, well, I'll let Suzanne speak to the actual purchases that we do, the equipment we're buying. Normally, we haven't seen such a large purchase in the past since I've been with the city, they basically have been under, well, under twenty-five, so, I'll, I'll let her speak to the equipment items.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's just a concern.
That's okay, usually how I handle this is anything that's under ten thousand dollars, and most of these purchases are computer equipment, iPads, things like that, which are about two thousand dollars. So, anything that's over ten thousand, I have to have second-level approval, so that goes through many different avenues. It goes to Janina first, I have to have a purchase order, it goes to Janina, then it goes to the finance director, then the assistant finance director for the requisition, then the PO, so there's many different avenues it goes through. And anything over twenty-five thousand, I have to go to the board. So, most, everything on this contract is small purchases, and unless we have an emergency, like, let's say one of our clusters go down, they're about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, that would be something that I would come to the board for. When we purchased the clusters, I came to the board and got approval for that. So, this contract is citywide for all of the computer purchases, not just IT, and all of these purchases go through each individual department, and it's inside of their budgets.
Okay, I just, that's what I thought, I knew it was for general computers and peripherals and stuff like that, I just, I'm not a big fan of general contracts that are percentage-based from a vendor perspective, just because I know that end of the industry very, very well, and I know that it's not always to a benefit if you're buying large-ticket items, or larger-ticket items, I just, I just wanna make sure that, I mean, I know you're probably aware of it, and I'm, you know, I'm preaching to the choir sort of thing, but, but I just wanna make sure that, that we take a discriminatory look at something when it's, when it's up in the twenty, twenty-five thousand dollar range, and we, you know, tend to wanna use the contract because it's quicker, we might wanna reconsider that sometimes, anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Just, just for clarification, anything over twenty-five thousand you come to the board with, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that would give the opportunity of any commissioner to ask a question at that time, if, if you, if there was this kind of consideration given as you're just describing, and then you could get your answer then on a case-by-case item, would that, I mean, is that acceptable?
Yeah, that's very acceptable to me, I just, you know, it's a blanket contract, I just wanted to make sure that we're still operating under the same auspices as if it wasn't a blanket contract.
Well, I, I, I think that's the point, if it comes forward and you see something that might be troubling to you or something, you could work that out with the city manager and, and the IT director. Thank you, Ms. Litten, are there any other commissioner comments? Public comments, are there any public comments concerning this item? Okay, may I have a motion to approve in a second, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Koyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Marilla?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticus?
Yes. Okay, item seven, I'm sorry, item eight, approve revised memorandum of agreements for the police chief and fire chief, city manager, of course.
So, we're all aware of this item, because it's been before us here before, it's, it's evolved from an audit that was done with the fire department in an attempt to correct something in the fire chief's contract, it evolved into a situation where you see the letter from the auditor questioning the, the contracts of the police chief and fire chief in not proper form. So this is an attempt to take everything we've talked about before, everything you've seen written, we had our labor attorney who's wrote the contracts before rewrite the contracts to meet the, the standards and make sure we adhere of everything by the charter. Our city attorney has reviewed what our labor attorney has done, again, these are contracts, these are memorandums, as we call them, of agreement, they just set out some simple terms. One of the main reasons this was started is the pension requirement, but whatever it is, it, they're, they're simple contracts after the person is ratified, so to correct both of those contracts of our two public safety officials, they have been rewritten, you see they're signed and approved by, by both attorneys, they have the proper signatures for the mayor, myself, and the city clerk, so we are gonna correct them and get these contracts right, and hopefully we'll move forward and put this issue behind us.
Thank you. Are there any public comments concerning this matter? Public comments? Mr. Pullos, I know you're there, so why don't you come forward as part of this matter before we go to commission comments? Do you have anything to say I should ask? Mr. Pullos is our internal auditor for the record.
Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for allowing me to, to, to speak on this agenda item. I have, I have a couple, a couple issues with, with, with these contracts.
Oh, Mr. Pullos, one point.
Yes, sir.
Unlike the last presentation, let's make this brief.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, absolutely, I know I'm getting tired as well. I have, I have a couple issues, I won't go into the history of the, of how they cut, I, I think the city manager did a good job of that, but I have a couple issues, and, the first one being the, the lack of essential contract clauses that these, these contracts do not have, and the second issue I have is that we're picking and choosing which directors have contracts and which don't, which leads to an inequality between, between directors. At the end of the day, the fire chief and the police chief, police chief, and this is not a reflection on them at all, but they're, they're department directors, and there's, there's nothing that says that either one of them have to have a contract, but when you give them a contract and you don't offer that same contract to, say, the procurement director, the library service director, that creates inequalities, because when you have a contract, you can negotiate certain benefits that other employees wouldn't be able to do, wouldn't, wouldn't be able to negotiate. So, so I think it's legally, I think that it's insufficient, I've never seen a contract, an employment contract, or any contract at all with, without having certain clauses like waiver, assignment, entire agreement, governing law, I mean, we don't even know where, where jurisdiction is for these contracts. They also don't have any performance measures, no goals, no objectives, I have no idea what the, the police chief or the fire chief is, is supposed to do, because it doesn't say so in the contract. My contract says what I'm supposed to do, the city manager's contract says what, what he's supposed to do, so I think, and, and part of my job is just identifying risks and making the board aware of these risks, and that, that's what I'm trying to do here, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I certainly wouldn't, wouldn't ever put my signature on a contract like that. Like I said, I've never, I've seen a lot of contracts in, in this time of work, and I've never seen ones that are this light on, on, on terms and conditions, in fact, if you look at them, it's basically a page and a half of how much money they're gonna make, what the benefits are gonna be, how much vacation time they're gonna get, how much sick time they're gonna get, and nothing about what they're actually gonna do, and no protections for the, the, you know, the citizens of, of, of Tarpon Springs. Like I said, it's, it's, it's really light on, really light on, on, on contract clauses that are pretty standard, I mean, you could just take my contract, change the name, change a few benefits, voila, there you go, and it won't, won't cost the city much at all, or you could download an employment contract online, that's better than these, I mean, I hate to even call it a contract, because it's really, it's really not, I mean, technically it is, because it meets the, the basic elements of a contract, but that's about it, and, so anyways, so obviously the board makes the ultimate decision, and I wanted you all to be aware of it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pullos.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Are there any public comments concerning this item? All right, hearing none. Commissioners, any comments? Commissioner?
Just maybe a short comment, I.
Go ahead.
Pardon me?
Please, continue.
I'm kind of of a mind that, that if we're going to redo contract memorandums, that, that we should probably put some more clauses in it, as, as, as he noted, I, I saw some deficiencies in it myself, and I'm not a contract, you know, employment contract person, but, so I, I would tend to agree with him.
Commissioner Isner?
Yes, I agree with what Commissioner Lunt just said. In addition, this was my complaint last time, that I didn't understand why we don't have one set, you know, set way of having a contract. I always thought that the contract should be written out explicitly by the city attorney, and have one contract that covers all the legal, the legality of what, what Mr. Pullos just said, so I, I just don't, I don't see why we should have different contracts.
Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, city attorney, can you help me understand this a little bit more, what Mr. Pullos brought up about some additional terms similar to, let's say, the charter employee contracts?
These are not charter officials, this is not a charter official contract, this is memorandum understanding, it is not required under the law to be in writing, it is not required under the law to be signed by the police chief or the, the fire chief, this could have been brought forward before you under a memorandum from the city manager saying these are the terms that I'm going to agree to for these two particular individuals, and I'm asking for your approval to, or your consent to do that, that is all that's required. To form a contract, there's only four things that are required, an offer, an acceptance, a meeting of the minds and consideration, all those requirements of the contract that is being called a contract have been met. These other provisions relative to goals and objectives and performance evaluations, those are all handled under the standard city employee provisions, you know, what happens upon death, or where notices are gonna go, and breach, waiver of breach, all those different things, I don't think that they're absolutely necessary in the agreement. The, the attorney that prepared it didn't see it either, and she is a labor and employment lawyer, I think it's, it's satisfied what is need, needed. If there was a requirement or the charter or the code that provided that, the agreements had to be exactly the same for every charter official and every director, well then, that's what we would do, but there is no requirement under your code or your charter to even have these agreements, so I'm satisfied with the way that it's written after having read it and after having seen that, and actually talked to Aaron Jackson about it as well, I'm comfortable with the way it is right now.
Okay, thank you. So, real quick, you mentioned the standard employee is a policy, or?
You have your personnel and policy procedures that govern, and so they're treated like any other city employee.
I mean, would it be best to just reference these and reference that in this at the end as another line item?
It, it is not required under the law.
Okay.
Yeah.
But just to clarify further, or, I guess nothing clarifies more than clarification, would that benefit anybody, or is it, you're just saying this, we're going above and beyond currently with these, there's no need to go any further?
I don't think there's, you need to do anything else. If you want us to add these provisions, we'd be happy to do that, I just don't think that they're necessary.
Okay, all right.
So, just to give us direction on how you wanna handle it, we'll, and we'll take it from there.
You haven't heard from me yet, but go ahead, Commissioner Carr.
Yeah, I'm just coming back, I'm not an attorney, I'm, I appreciate, I appreciate your, what your recommendations are, in this case, I think I'm gonna side with the labor attorney on this one, but I, I think your, your points are very valid, and I appreciate you bringing those forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Carr. Commissioner Koyas?
Yes, I just wanted to ask that, in these agreements, are, are the chiefs allowed to receive any lead pay? Because I just wanted to make sure that doesn't, that's not an issue, I looked in the agreements, I don't see anything about lead pay in the future, so.
Paid leave.
They leave?
Lead.
Lead?
Lead pay.
You're talking about paid leave, or, or?
Lead pays when you, uh.
Sell-back leave?
A lead worker.
Oh, lead worker pay.
Lead worker, yes.
They're not in these, these two contracts.
Okay.
And, and again, just, just a quick add from that, I'd just like to get these resolved in the past due before we do any other contracts with the city, I know the auditor's coming back with some personal, but I guarantee you, before we come back with any, I'd like to resolve these, and again, the labor attorney, obviously she was traveling, she called me in the middle of the airport, she said the same thing, it's, you know, these aren't the same, but I'd just like to get this, the, these, these resolved, and we can talk about a process, where to go move forward on any of these future memorandums of agreements, I call them opposed to contract, whatever it is, I just wanted to offer that up, that we've got time before another one of these come up to talk about, you know, where we go on any future ones, and be happy to entertain those discussions of where we go with future ones.
Commissioner Koyas, anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay.
From my, from my perspective, I've had a conversation with the city manager, he knows how I feel about it, I've been in his shoes, I've had a conversation with the internal auditor as well, I don't understand why we have a contract, I really don't. These are executive exempt employees, they're, they're at-will employees, they serve at the pleasure of the city manager, they're salaried individuals. Now, if you kind of look at the history of all these little, not every department head, not every executive exempt employee has a contract, why? It's as Mr. Trass says, there's no requirement for it, but there's always been little nuances that have come along that have, for whatever reason, it was either memorandum understanding between the city manager and employee, sometimes he, the city managers wrap things up with the ratification of approval of hiring a specific individual, sometimes there's been some issues concerning retirement and transitioning from a, a, I don't wanna say union representative, but somebody that was part of a, of a, of a retirement program that was outside of the general employees, and that person moved out of the, for example, the retirement programs of the police and fire and became a general employee, there's little nuances in that, but technically, legally, there's absolutely no requirement that is needed. In fact, every time, in my opinion, I'm not an attorney, but I'm smart enough to know that every time you provide somebody a contract that gives them certain rights, whether it's development rights on land, you give them certain rights, it weakens the city's position in these matters. So, there may be some consideration that has to occur for Mr. LaCourice to entice somebody to take a position at the department head level, and then he can deal with that through a memorandum, but these contracts and the fact that the mayor's required to sign a personnel contract, I know the charter requires all contracts, but to me, it's a real stretch of why I'm even getting my name on this thing, so that's how I feel about it. I've agreed to move forward with these two things as they're written, because I don't wanna spend any more time on this stuff. I know Mr. Pullos is gonna have a very extensive and thorough re-audit of employees in general, and I'm, I'm looking forward to that at some point in the future, but just based on experience, I don't even know why we have these contracts, other than there's little, you know, special things for people that come here and that the city manager needs to address this. I think in this particular case, our two chiefs got caught up in something that started back in, I guess it was the early nineties, the eighties, with Al Carr, fire chief, and it's progressed, the earliest I found was with fire chief Butcher and police chief Cochen back in two-thousand. The earliest I found was with Fire Chief Butcher and Police Chief Cochen back in 2011 or something like that. And so I'll support these as they're written, just because I don't want to spend any more time, any more money on these things. I've stated that to Mr. Pulis, and I think, Mr. Pulis, if you speak to him, I think you'll find agreement that he's not sure why we're having contracts with executive exempt employees anyway. So that's my position on it. Are there any other comments?
Yeah, I do. I think if you take a step back and look at these things, what they are is a little bit more formalized offer of employment. When you make an offer of employment, you're stating certain things as far as salary and benefits and so forth. But basically, what happens when you've got senior executives that work for a city is their job morphs over time. It changes, you know, different things change. So I think it's, I think it's not so much that we need a higher-clad contract, but I think it's a good restatement of their position and benefits and salary and so forth, because they do change over time. And especially, you know, in relationship to if they're getting benefits that are union akin.
But, but the way that works is that the city manager comes back with an updated jobs description with additional duties in there, and at the budget time, he requests an adjustment in the salary because of the additional responsibilities. That's the way I see it, how it's supposed to work. And that covers that aspect of it. I mean, that's how I've done in the past.
Well, covers it from the city's perspective. From the employee's perspective, they need some sort of memorandum, some sort of.
Why?
Well.
Why? I mean, they're an at-will employee. They took a job without any guarantees. They have to perform to do their work.
I don't actually look at this personally as a guarantee. I look at it as, this is what you're getting paid. We've changed it, so this is the new understanding between us. Not, not, you know, you know, we shorted you 37 cents over the last six years, we're making, you know, that sort of thing?
No, I understand.
This is, this is just a restatement of their.
Why don't we have this greater conversation with, after Mr. Pulis comes back?
We could take this offline.
I mean, if that's acceptable to you. I understand.
Perfectly acceptable.
I've just, you know, as an old kind of city manager, and I did things a little more from my perspective. I've always done things through job descriptions and adjustments that I brought back at budget time to the commission, and they've approved it. And if there's some separate memorandum of understanding, like for example, the personnel policies on some of these, I guess they're the assistant deputy chiefs, right? There's no need for the city manager to bring those back to us. It's basically what you're talking about, but there's no need. That's his responsibility under the charter. So you're not seeing everything that the internal auditor brought up. This is just the two chiefs. There, I think there's five deputy chiefs, is that correct? About five deputy chiefs that came up in the audit, of the fire department audit, that is part of this. You haven't seen that, that's because it's his authority under the charter to take care of that.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, I would like to, if it's acceptable to the commission, unless you feel like otherwise this evening, but I just want to get this thing done and get out of here in terms of these particular items, and then come back at a later date. Any thoughts on that?
I'm fine. I've been in exempt positions for years.
No, I have as well. Nobody guarantees.
I've always had a contract.
Hey, listen, nobody guarantees me. In fact, just a quick story. I was double-hatted as building director, city engineer. I didn't get any extra pay. I got city engineers' pay. When I was double-hatted as city engineer, city manager, I got the city manager's pay that the previous city manager got. Nothing extra on that. But I only had one job description, and that was the city manager's job description. Now, that's my problem. It wasn't the city's, so, anyway. But thank you. Is there any other comments? Did we have a motion, or no motion in a second yet?
Motion to approve revised memorandum of agreement for police chief and fire chief.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lott?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius?
Yes. You can see there's a little frustration on my part with this thing, because I don't, we're spending so much time on this.
I know, we spend more time.
It's just, it's like other things that we've got that we've made things difficult for ourselves, so. Okay, the last item is item nine, authorized settlement of code enforcement lien, 311 East Harrison Street. Mr. Taylor, city manager, I'm sorry, city attorney Trask, if you'd like to deal with this.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. So before you is a settlement offer from Herman Taylor Jr. for $1,000 to settle a code enforcement lien that has been on the property located at 311 East Harrison Street since about 2003. Some background on this. Mr. Taylor was found to have high grass, junk trash, and debris on his property. It took some time for the property to get cleaned up, and he brought into compliance a couple of years, in fact. There was a fine assessed. The principal amount of the fine is approximately $27,000. There's also $20,000 in interest and recording fees and administrative fees and satisfaction fees. In 2019, I started talking to Mr. Taylor about possibly resolving this code enforcement lien. When he first called me, he told me that he was very sick. He was bedridden, that he was on his deathbed, and he wanted to get this resolved. I asked him about the lien, because I didn't have the background on it, and he told me it was a 2003 lien. And so in 2019, I had recommended to him just to wait, that the lien would become ineffective in 2023, and he wouldn't have to worry about it any longer. But he was not satisfied with that. He wanted to get it resolved before something terrible happened in his life, and he passed. So we picked up the discussions again earlier this year, and on July 10th, I received the following letter from Mr. Taylor. It's typewritten. I think somebody typed it for him, but it looks, it looks like an older signature, but I'm just going to read it. It's dated July 10th, 2022. "I, Herman Taylor Jr., owner of the property located at 311 East Harrison Street, Tarpon Springs, am writing in reference to a lien the City of Tarpon Springs is holding on my home. In a previous conversation, I said I would make an offer of good faith of $1,000 to the City of Tarpon Springs to clear the lien. I'm a very sick, bedridden man with only a small social security check that barely pays my utilities and medication. Please understand that I do not take this situation lightly, and need to clear this matter not only for my home safety, but also for my health. This is a huge burden on me, and I would like to see it cleared. Sincerely, Herman Taylor Jr." When I received that offer, I contacted the city manager's office. City manager is supportive as well as I am to settle the case for the $1,000. This will basically break the city even for expenses that have been incurred in prosecuting the case and bringing the case in 2003, and any inspections that occurred since then, and any staff time involved. So I'm here tonight asking for your authority to allow the city to accept $1,000 in full settlement of the lien against Mr. Taylor, and the amount, which is currently in the amount of $47,868.14. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions if you have any.
I have one question starting out. Just if we waive the fine for $1,000, would that cause a problem for Mr. Taylor? I mean, is this a matter of pride for him, or is, in other words, he feels obligated that he should pay something, or?
I did not have that conversation with him. He said that he was, at one point, the offer was $2,000, that he said he could probably come up with $2,000. And I said, can you put something in writing? And what we got back was a letter for a settlement at $1,000. So I'm not sure anything about that.
How he would take that if we waived it?
No, sir, I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner comments on this item before we go to the public? Commissioner Eisner?
One of two things. Either we have to change the way we build this out with the code enforcement, or we have to change the way we accept it, because it makes it into a joke that we have $20,000, we accept $1,000. We have $100,000, we accept $30,000, we have $70,000 on the table. It's got to be one side or the other. Either we shouldn't be building it up that much, or we shouldn't be knocking it down, because it devalues what we are doing as a code enforcement.
I understand what you're saying. Any other comments? Commissioner comments? Commissioner Carr? Commissioner Kuyas? You know, I mean, Commissioner Eisner's right, you know, but a lot of these things caught up and get caught up in the calendar, and they just continue on and on and on. And we have another one that there's some verbal jousting going back and forth between the city attorney and the other person's representatives. And all that's happening is the fine continues to accumulate. I do know that some of these, some of these in some areas are not fully recognized as far as what the accumulation is until something is, like the sale of the property, then all of a sudden, somebody comes forward and says, well, there's a $43,000 or $45,000 lien on the property. So I don't, I don't have an answer, and I'm not going to solve that problem, or at least, we should not attempt to solve that problem tonight. But I was just, you know, for what the original violation was after 2003, so it's 19 years, is that correct? This has been going on since, for 19 years, and the fine, I mean, the property was brought into compliance in 2005.
Correct.
So this has been, the fine's been there.
That's crazy.
Since 2005. Mr. Taylor has, there's some other issues here as far as property transferring ownership through quitclaim deeds. I talked to the city attorney about that today. I mean, we can go ahead and accept $1,000. I actually feel bad that we're accepting anything on it, given the circumstances, so. Public comments? Is there any public comments on this?
Peter Lax, 504 Ashland Avenue. Part of the reason this process is before you is because when we were on the board as commissioners, we used to get complaints of people like Mayor Vaticius just represented. Property gets inherited, someone's taking care of something, and for years, there's been a fine on the books, but it's not like the city's been sending out a notice every six months saying, oh, you got a fine, or you got a, so maybe you need to come to some point to have a workshop about code enforcement in general. Part of also the reason that we put this in place was as an alternative for residents to be able to come to the city for relief from, I hate to say it, sometimes a vindictive code enforcement and code enforcement board. You got a lawsuit, if you look on there, number 904, on the invoices, just about that. Mr. Patzalides is filing, requesting, I believe, a settlement, and if nothing comes forward, I think it's basically a notice of intend to suit. Mr. Trask can further advise you on that. And that was code enforcement harassment. My neighbor across the street dealt with code enforcement harassment at the board. Mr. Trask will remember. I came to speak for my neighbor and explain the situation. Lady had purchased a lot from the city that was adjoining her property. The city got that land donated to him in the late 20s or early 30s, originally as a root, if needed. So technically, they shouldn't have sold the lot to private property. They probably had to go back to the original heirs to offer it back, because I don't remember all the deed clauses, but, but long story short, city never maintained that property. Years across the street, overgrowth, vines, everything. Thankfully, no trash, but overgrowth. Same thing you see, overgrowth of yards. What happened? She bought the property. I couldn't tell you how soon after that she started getting the letters for code. So I think it's with generosity and heartfelt consideration that you will accept this offer. It sounds as if even this will be difficult, but that's up to y'all, how you handle it. But I definitely think we've come to a point where we need to relook of how we do code. One, again, I'll say it, needs to be in the building development department, because most of the stuff has to do with buildings, structures, yards. It's not a police function. Why should you have to put it in the police department? Yes, there is enforcement to it, but you do it through the courts and letters, not by someone driving up in a police vehicle with a gun strap to their side. And I know that's not the case now, so I won't want to infer that that's what's going on. But that's how it was then in the past, and that's how a lot of residents still see it as. So to change that viewpoint and how residents see the city's treating them, I think now's the time to start looking and resolve some of these other broader, wider issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plakis. Any other comments? Okay, may I have a motion in a second?
Motion approved. As per.
At $1,000. Okay, is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Lott?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius?
Yes. Okay, that ends the, I think that ended the agenda for tonight. Is that correct, everybody? All right, thank you. Let's go to staff and board comments. Does staff have any comments? Chief Young?
No comments, sir.
Okay. See Attorney Trask?
I've got a few comments. This is the only time I get to be able to speak, and so I wanted to clear up a couple of different things that I've heard tonight relative to some of the things that the city attorney's office is doing. I won't take more than two or three minutes. I want to talk to you about the, there was some discussion from the public about the Verus litigation, and I want to remind the commission what that is. This is the property at 127 Gross. This is the property that had the building in it that collapsed. It was collapsed on the property. The city had to go in and demolish the building to make it safe, because the rest of the building was leaning towards the neighbor, and the neighbor thought that the house was going to collapse on their house. In that particular case, the city foreclosed a code enforcement lien and was successful. The city owns the property. Subsequent to the judicial sale, the former owner filed an appeal. That's what is showing in your invoices about that particular litigation. There was an appeal filed. We're defending it for the city. The city owns this property. It's worth about $125,000. You spent about $5,000 or so in the appellate process. I also want to talk about my contract. We have a contract with the city, and it's been, it was approved in September of last year. It's a three-year contract, so there's no need to, you know, address the issue in RFP. That will occur automatically unless the contract is extended. I also heard some derogatory comments about my representation in the City of Dunedin, and I want to let you know that our law firm represented the City of Dunedin for about 45 years. I represented the City of Dunedin for 10 years. When my contract expired, I did not pursue the position with the City of Dunedin after my contract expired. I wasn't let go. I wasn't fired. I let my contract. Once my contract expired, I fulfilled all my obligations. They did an RFP. I did not apply for that RFP. As for the City of Madeira Beach, the same is true. I had a three-year contract with the City of Madeira Beach. I fulfilled all my legal requirements under the contract. When it expired, I decided I no longer wanted to be the city attorney for Madeira Beach, and therefore, they did an RFP, and they had another attorney appointed. So these comments about what the City of Dunedin did, the City of Madeira Beach did, what's happening with regard to our defense of the city, you know, I don't appreciate, you know, the attack on my integrity by some individuals in the audience. It's just not fair. I'm doing what I'm legally obligated to do, and these snide marks about. And these slide, snide marks about, you know, what is happening in other cities and what is not. Being truthful would be helpful. Not being truthful is not helpful. And I would hope that we would get to a point where we'd get back to the position where the mayor is constantly saying, let's be kind. We're just doing our jobs, we're trying to do them the correct way. And I've lived in Tarpon Springs the majority of my life. I, I take offense to the fact that I'm not looking forward for the best interest of Tarpon Springs. I went to middle school here in this building, I went to high school here. And this city is very important to me. And it will always be important to me, whether a few in the audience think so or not. So I appreciate the extra two or three minutes to be able to explain that. I will continue on here as long as you'll have me. And I'm proud to be your city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Trask. Is, yeah, City Manager LaCorne, do you have any-
Yeah, I just have two things. One is you should have got the evaluation forms that we talked about at the last meeting for the charter officials. I will tell you, hopefully Commissioner Londo, Vice Mayor Londo appreciate, Judy will send an electronic version, which you could do electronically also. So those who favor the paper form, you've got it. She'll send it how you can do it electronically, um, for the three charter officials, um, or charter officials. So the packet, the written packet's here, but she will be sending you electronic method to do it, whichever way, you know, you choose the evaluations for August. The second thing is, is I was looking, and I didn't look at other meetings yet, but for some, I, I, the third budget meeting that is scheduled for the eleventh, obviously, two of you are at the Florida League of Cities. I'm trying to look, and I, I can't find my list. I thought somebody may be off, so I wanted to check, because I was looking between Monday the fifteenth and Wednesday, the seventeenth of August. Um, I, I have to look at the building availability, but it came to me that somebody was possibly off those days of the fifteenth, sixteenth, seventeenth of August, which is after the two returns from League of Cities. Is, is anybody off those day? And I'll get back to you about the building availability and stuff, but was, was anybody, or was, I just missed the dates of, of, of you having someone scheduled-
For the charter thing, right? For the charter meeting you're talking about, or another-
No, this is for the third budget me, the, the one that's canceled for the eleventh, because they're the, the third budget meeting and stuff. And we may also, we may also, since we have that date, look at something, you know, we may add that, or, or I have to find another date for that meeting and stuff, or-
For the charter-
Or depending how far we get Thursday night, you know, we may combine, and we may have to have another date for them. But I'm worried about that third budget meeting to try to get a date for, but-
So it's currently August eleventh, right?
It was, it was.
Oh, was, you changed it?
Well, two, that's when the Florida League of Cities hit, and we've got two commissioners going, so it was canceled to the date to be determined if we needed it. Obviously, from the challenge we had from the first budget meeting, the challenge we had, we kind of said, we're probably going to need to reset that new date of the eleventh meeting. We're probably not going to get it done Thursday night. Um, so we need that third date reset from the eleventh, so. I'll just check in the avail, the, those three days first. If someone was off, then I'll, I'll continue looking for another one. But I just remembered somebody that middle of August I thought was gone for three days. Uh, when y'all gave me the vacation stuff, I just can't find my-
I'm good till October first, so anything in between now and then is fine.
I'm okay, everybody's-
I'm, I'm available August fifteenth through the eighteenth.
Available, Commissioner Carr? You are.
I am not.
You're not.
Are you the one that was off that time?
I don't know.
You might have get, I-
But I'm, I'm not now, so I can tell you that, so. Um, I've got some travel plans and some, uh, school stuff that my children have to do those nights.
Okay, I'll, is, is there any as we come up to the, through the, uh, next week, that we got, are those through, the only three days, or?
It was the last half of the, the week of the eighth, and then the first half of the week of the fifteenth. So I should be good anytime between now and the fifth. Or after the seventeenth.
Okay. That helps me. I, I, that must, it must have been yours, because I, I, I knew there was some reason that, that week was bad, so thank you. I'll look for some dates and get back to you. Hopefully, at the Thursday night budget meeting, we'll-
What, uh-
Is that all you have?
Yeah.
Ms. Menusus, do you have anything?
I'm good, thank you. No comment.
Um, Vice Mayor Lunt, do you have anything?
No, I'm good.
Commissioner Carr? Uh, Commissioner Eisner?
Definitely. Yes. I want to make some comments, and I would like to hear what the other commissioners have to say regarding this.
I'm sorry, say that again. You're going to make some comments, and you would like me to what?
I would like Commissioner comments to follow on what I have to say. And just let me know what you think. So originally, when we had the Anklod Harbor project that came before this day, I had asked for advice of whether we could be sued or not. And at the time, I spoke with Jay, Mr. Trask's partner, and he told me over the phone that we could be sued for twenty million dollars. So when he was up here speaking, he used the words that we could be sued for two point eight million dollars. And then in the same breath, because we were a lower tribunal, we were most probably not able to be sued.
You're speaking Attorney Dagnall now, with the two point eight, and then the-
Correct.
Yes.
So those, those are first, the first three things. There was an issue that went on in the, um, planning and zoning between, um, Attorney Erica and some of the board members. I had called Mr. Trask and asked him to go back and, um, review the case and see what happened, and get back to me with what he thought. I did not hear from him, so I contacted him. He said to me he was on vacation, but he'll look into it and get back to me. I'm still, at this point, have not gotten any word back from that situation. So I'm still waiting for that comment. As far as the evidentiary hearing that we went through, I called the city attorney and asked him, when was the last evidentiary hearing that we had? And he can't remember one in the last sixteen years. So being it wasn't a quasi-judicial hearing and wasn't a legislative hearing, we as a board got no advice on whether, what an evidentiary hearing is, what it should have been, what we could say, what we couldn't say. And that's what allowed me to ask the questions that I was asked then finally to be recused. This is a project that's the largest project that, um, Tarpon Springs has ever seen. And I just thought, in my own opinion, that that was either poor advice or no advice. I need proactive advice, not reactive advice. When I called and asked the city attorney why we weren't advised, the comment, and I'll allow him to respond to this, he said that while Chris Alhoosis was the mayor, he ran the show. As you are the mayor, you requested you run the show. So I took that as you got the blame, not him. That's the way I see it. So I guess he can explain that differently.
For, for the blame for what?
Well, meaning that-
Not giving you instructions?
Yes, or, or whatever, whatever he explained, that, that's the way it was presented to me. So, um, I believe that we should have gotten a warning, um, prior to not bringing up evidence. Because I don't feel that going and doing my due diligence and getting, uh, information that was valid. In, in my response, when I asked the city attorney, he said, who should you believe? Someone who comes before you, who raises their hand and swears to tell the truth and the whole truth, or if somebody that was on the phone? And I said, well, the somebody that was on the phone is the lead person in the Army Corps of Engineers. So I, and he's the one that issues the permit. So I think I kind of believe who's the guy that's going to issue the permit. There was another question that I had asked another attorney, how this could have been rectified. And again, I'll allow him to speak on it, but the attorney explained to me that I could have been asked to declare what I know, so that everybody on the board would then be playing with an even playing field, rather than just me recusing myself. I believe that we had a resolution, um, with ethics on Commissioner Carr. And I know that the letter to the ethics board did not get sent for over twenty-four days. Again, he can explain why that's happened, but to me, that's not doing the job. So the other thing is that when these contracts were originally written for the fire chief and the police chief, I don't understand why, uh, the city attorney didn't know that he was either supposed to sign the contract. I mean, today he spoke that it's, you don't need a contract. But that should have been brought up on the first time that we had this discussion. So, uh, the other thing, and hopefully the last thing I have to say is, we're getting all of these code enforcement, um, requests, and each and every one of them says it's cheaper to just settle than to go into attorney fees. I don't know what the attorney fees will be. I don't know how much, you know, we were here for a case that there was over a hundred thousand dollars sitting in escrow. And that was, that was city money. That was sitting in our lap. And there was no further legal fees that we could incur. And we accepted, as per our city attorney, thirty thousand dollars. Not, you know, we could have said, hey, you, we'll give you thirty thousand off, and we could take seventy thousand or eighty thousand. Decisions like this, as a new commissioner, I'm I, I find disturbing. So I don't know if who wants to speak, or if any of this bothers anybody else, or if it doesn't. And I'm happy to hear what city attorney has to say in response. But if this is something that concerns you, um, or anybody here on the board, feel free to say what you have to say. That's all I have.
Okay, well, let me, let me, I, I mean, do you have any kind of, uh, kind of where you want to go? Or these are just observations that would be included in a, in a, in the, in the evaluation? I mean, I'm not sure, um, these are just things that you're making observations on, is that correct?
It is.
Okay. Well, let me ask, um, before I ask Mr. Trask, um, do, does anybody else have anything to say about that?
I'd like to.
I've got a quick comment. I mean, this is strictly evaluation based in, in this aspect, so I don't know-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I said, everything that was just said was strictly evaluation based. It can be done in evaluation, there's no need to bring it up any further. Discussion point amongst the board. Evaluation between the commissioner and the charter official.
No, I, I understand. I, I just want to get this thing done this evening, as far as this particular item, I understand. Vice Mayor Lunt, let me ask, did you have anything that you want to say?
I don't really have any comments. I, uh, I was surprised at the amount of time it took to file that ethics complaint. I think it didn't get filed until I questioned it three weeks later. But that's my only observation. I have no idea of the background of, of anything.
Okay. Commissioner Kulyas?
Yeah. I think, uh, I think their firm does a great job in exploring all aspects of a situation, which we saw with Anklod Harbors. Between Mr. Daniel and Mr. Trask, we had, uh, two, two different, uh, opinions on uncharted territory. But at the end of the day, we, we got that email recently, and both of their opinions led us to where we thought they would lead us. And so we do get good advice. I think they're looking out for the best interest of the city always. Regarding the evidentiary hearing, sometimes we just have to ask very simple questions, like I did myself, to ask, you know, was it a quasi-judicial or evidentiary hearing? The planning and zoning board, I've seen a couple of times where, uh, I see the planning and zoning boards, uh, frustration with our city attorney representing them. But I think, uh, our city attorney, who's at the planning and zoning board, who actually takes in everything, I think she does a job where she tries to, uh, help weed out what's not supposed to be heard and what's supposed to be taken into evidence. And she's very firm on that, to help the planning and zoning board come to those decisions. The code enforcement, that's just a lot. That's just a lot, uh, you know, I don't, Mr. Trask and their firm do what they do to get things out and get settlements in and, you know, get all the paperwork involved. But there, there was a lot to it that's slowly all getting worked out. And, um, the ethics complaint, we can, yeah, it might have took a month, but it's, it's in now. So, you know, we were able to follow up, and sometimes that's what we need to do as commissioners, is follow up. I mean, uh, of course, it's our, you know, our city attorney's job to remember to put in a lot of stuff, but they have a lot of stuff to deal with. And that's no excuse, because they, they do it with a lot of other, you know, cities and stuff. But, uh, we do have to follow up too, to make sure that certain things are implemented, is done as well. So, thank you.
Okay. Let me just share a couple of observations. Before I start looking at others, I look at myself first, and I always ask myself if I'm, if I'm the problem, sort of thing. And, um, I, I can tell you that the, um, Anklod Harbor project for me is, is, you know, given my experience at the city past, um, with things I dealt with back then, what I'm dealing with now has been the most frustrating. And I think, and I know Commissioner Carr's talked about divisiveness, but that project has been the most divisive of anything I've ever seen in this city of Tarpon Springs. And it's festering. It continues to fester. So sometimes my emotions get the best of me, and, um, and I have conversations with, um, probably more so with, uh, Mr. Dagnall, because he's our litigation attorney. My conversations with Mr. Trask are through, um, primarily emails. And, um, and, and my frustration is, and it's got nothing to do with the two attorneys, it's got to do with, I don't like the answers I get. But that's not their problem. It's just, that's the way it is. And so I'm very, very careful of starting to look at individuals and trying to find reasons of why, um, things haven't gone well because of those, um, uh, others that are involved. And that goes with our staff as well, our city staff as well. And, um, they did their job. They probably did a little too well. We've had some older, uh, ordinances that we've had to deal with, that things haven't been updated, that, that's a, this, you know, a story for another day. And look at the legal team that the developer had, now Mr. Armstrong and Mr. McLaren. And I've worked with Mr. Armstrong for, I've known him for a very long time. He's an outstanding attorney, and his reputation precedes him. So, um, I, I think for the most part, um, I think our attorneys provide us answers to the best that they can. And, and it's almost being answer, it's almost answering hypothetical situations in, in that regard. In other words, you know, what's, and I, I've gotten the same numbers, you know, one minute it's forty to fifty billion, another minute it's two point eight. But it's always, I, I don't listen enough to get the context of the answer. What is that context? And I think if you take it to the next step, you might see that the context of that reply is different for one than the other. So, um, you know, everything I'm going to, uh, conversations I'm going to have with, uh, Mr. Trask is in the evaluation. But I've always looked at myself, and I, I understand, um, what you're saying, Commissioner Eisner. There's a lot of things that bother me about, um, several things that have happened. And I'll have those conversations. A lot of the frustration on my part is, again, I don't like getting the answers that I get. But if that's law, then that's law. And if it's a hypothetical, and that's the best that it can be done, or, um, the answer is conditioned on something, not knowing, uh, everything that could happen. It's trying to sage what the future is going to portend. So I, I, um, I, I'm not ready to, uh, i- if this is an idea of having some, uh, representation towards, uh- towards, uh, Mr. Trask and his law firm, I, I'm not ready to go there this evening on that. I, I've, there's some additional thinking that I need to do and, and work through the evaluation process, and have conversations with Mr. Trask as well. But again, I always look at myself first before I start looking at others. And, and I know me, and I, I'm very impassioned about Tarpon Springs, just like Mr. Trask said he is. And when I see things that don't work well, that, that I feel that somehow the, the residents, for the most part, have been shortchanged, and you can't do anything about it, that's the most frustrating thing that you can ever, ever face. Especially whether you, you know, as a former building director, city engineer, city manager, city commissioner, now mayor, that's the most frustrating thing I can ever experience. And, and you can check with my wife, and she'll tell you she's tired of hearing me. So, Mr. Trask, um, I don't know if you want to say anything about this this evening, or if you want to...
I don't have any comments.
...deal with it through the evaluation process, and I...
Yeah, I don't have any comments.
Okay. You have any other, I mean, I'm not sure, you're, you're not, I know you're not probably satisfied with what you've heard or anything, but...
These were not legal, um, answers I was getting. They were more either evasive answers or a lack of answers. That's not a, that's not what my complaint was about.
May, may I ask you to kind of work through this through the evaluation process?
Sure.
And then, after the evaluation, um, I've always gone back and have seen what other commissioners have written, and, um, and kind of, maybe there's something new that's brought up by another commissioner that I didn't pick up on, and, and I, and I think it's really interesting to see what, how others look at it differently than the way I look at it. That, that's all I can offer you tonight, Commissioner Eisner. But I, I very much appreciate what you're saying. I, I feel the frustration. I, don't get me wrong, I, I, I think sometimes we put, we, we ask questions that are not well defined, and, and we get answers, but it's answers we don't like. Or sometimes you ask one thing, you get something, and you ask another, you get a different, uh, different question. I understand, a different answer. Okay? Any other commission, any comments, any further comments?
I, I've gotten my answer.
Okay. Commissioner Cullias?
Just a recommendation for us to have that third budget session before September 1st. We could get it sometime in August, that'd be great.
Yeah, we have to, because we don't want to get too close to the, the public hearings, where we got to make changes or anything like that. So, yeah, I'm going to try to do it as soon as I can find the date open for us that we can do.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Let me just say, in general, um, I, I, if you weren't going to say anything, Commissioner Eisner, I was going to express the same thing as I said, that you hear a lot of things that come from residents and things like that. And, and, you know, for me, sometimes I, I get answers I don't like. And that seems to try and taint the way things feel, but I've said enough about that. I, I simply want to extend my appreciation and gratitude to the residents this evening for the frustration of the lightning interaction, the lightning strike that we had here at City Hall. We didn't have Zoom. I'm probably going to hear it when I get home from my wife, who wanted to watch things on, um, on, on YouTube that maybe she didn't see them. I don't know what, what the final outcome was on that. I also want to extend my thanks to this commission. You, you, you know, we've had some pretty testy things tonight. I think, um, some of the, are, um, you know, um, or frustrations have shown on our sleeves in this regard this evening, so, but for the most part, we maintain several. And, and again, I, I really think that everybody needs to remain kind to each other, even though that you may have differences of opinion. And certainly, um, we can always do things better, and we need to continue working to that end. There's a lot of things that I'll probably be getting into a little in the next couple of meetings with things that are kind of, um, issues that we need to kind of plug before they become serious issues. I've had conversations with the city manager, you'll be seeing those, and kind of authorizations to proceed to, to expend resources to look at, into these sort of things a little more. You'll see that, I'm hoping, in the first, uh, meeting in August. Uh, and also to the staff as well, for, um, you know, being patient with us and some of the questions we ask of the staff, and, and, and we're just trying to get answers. And, and sometimes, for me personally, I, I don't ask it the best way, and I certainly don't want it to come across as being personal or anything like that in that matter. I just want to do the best job I can for representing the residents. That's all I have. Meeting adjourned at 9:58.